Did you go get some more tea?
What'd you get?
Apple ready? And everybody's mics on, that's exciting. All right, do I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin? Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to long-term suspend student A?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up is our MCPS mission and belief statements. Our student representative tonight is Marina Lee from BHS, Mallory Acres from Auburn High School cannot be with us tonight. Marina, will you please read the mission and belief statements?
MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences. And then for the beliefs, all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive community member. The diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. All people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Every child deserves an advocate. Honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. Relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Great, thank you. Our next item is the student representative reports. Marina, do you have a report from Blacksburg High School?
So, the band and choir programs earned the Blue Ribbon Award after they both scored superior ratings at their assessments. And then we have our prom on Saturday, April 12th. And then our spring sports have officially started, and we've had a couple games and then matches for all the sports. And then since the last meeting, we won state championships in girls indoor track, boys swim and dive, scholastic ball, and wrestling, placed ninth in the state with one individual state championship.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, our honors and recognitions, Dr. Lori Comer, our Director of Secondary Education, will start our presentation for seniors of the month.
Good evening Chair Hudson, school board members, student representatives, Dr. Bragan and Ms. Osborne. We are proud to celebrate the outstanding achievements of a senior from two of our high schools tonight. Students who exemplify leadership and dedication. Their profiles on display here and in the central office lobby will highlight their talents, aspirations, and their impact. The administrator from each school will share reflections about their character and their contributions. These students represent the best of our schools, supported by their families and educators. Tonight, our student honoree from Auburn High School could not attend but will be recognized in May. Our student honoree from Eastern Montgomery High School is representing his school tonight on the soccer field as a game was already scheduled. He will also be recognized in May. Each school administrator will now present their honoree, Mr. Chris Stewart from Blacksburg High School and Mr. Shang Guan from Christiansburg High School. We will begin with Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bragan. It is my pleasure to present the Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month. This evening, I would like to recognize Grace LaFawn as the April Senior of the Month. Grace is here this evening with her family, I'd like to invite them to come up and join me. I'd like to read a brief statement from one of our staff members. I am honored to recommend Grace LaFawn for Student of the Month. She consistently demonstrates an extraordinary level of determination, initiative, and leadership both in and out of the classroom. As a self-starter, Grace doesn't wait for instruction. She takes the initiative to dive into her work, showing incredible focus and dedication. Beyond her individual achievements, Grace stands out for her ability to inspire and lead her peers. She fosters a collaborative environment by encouraging others to do their best and providing assistance when needed. Her positive can-do attitude is contagious, and she always steps up to help classmates who may be struggling. In every aspect of her academic life, Grace brings kindness, hard work, and a genuine desire to see those around her succeed. She is a true asset to our school community, and it is clear that her determination and leadership will continue to inspire others. For all these reasons, I wholeheartedly recommend Grace as Student of the Month. Congratulations, Grace.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bragan and our student representative. It is my pleasure to introduce the April Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School, Ms. Abigail Hewitt. I would like to ask Abigail and her family to please come forward at this time. When asking some of her teachers to describe Abigail, they said, "Abigail is one of the most talented people I know, one who enjoys life, living life to its fullest extent. She is often sought out by her peers and teachers, all of whom find talking with her refreshing, as those conversations are mature, engaging, and enlightening. Abigail accomplishes all of this while maintaining a 4.22 GPA and a demanding class schedule. I have found her to be an exceptional young woman with outstanding moral character. She is one of the best and brightest students I have ever taught. She is an extremely reliable student and a musician, continuing to grow and challenge herself. If you want to experience the best part of Abigail, catch her while she is fully immersed in creativity. Abigail shines in moments of artistic expression. She paints with her whole body as if she could directly channel that movement onto a surface. On stage, she exudes confidence and evokes emotion whether she is acting, directing, or dancing. Abigail thoroughly embodies the core values that we uphold at Christiansburg High School and is an excellent representation for Senior of the Month honors. Abigail plans to attend a four-year university as an English major and dance minor and pursue a career in communications. She plans to attend the University of Virginia, we won't hold that against you, or the College of William and Mary. Congratulations, Abigail."
Okay, great, thanks everybody. The board will now take a very brief break to thank our honorees for being here today. I'd ask the students and their families, if you want to maybe hang out up front here and we'll come down there and say hi. All right, our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in our community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes. To start our public address, we have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. Clock continues for applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers we get to address the board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. And our first speaker tonight is Carol LaHass.
Thank you. I'm Carol LaHass of Reiner, Virginia. I'd just like to say that I'm glad to see that the hate speech policy is on your agenda again, that there's a timeline for implementation. And I haven't had a lot of time to look at it, but one of the things that I noticed as an educator myself is the apparent lack of teacher training. And I know that K-12 teachers are much better trained than college professors in education itself. But I think there's still an emphasis on disciplinary material, right? That you, you know, you're going to teach your social studies, your math, and there's not necessarily as much training on handling difficult conversations in the classroom. And so I know it can be paralyzing sometimes when something comes up, when you've got a student who's truly antagonistic, right? That there's... Or the other situation where you have a student who maybe offhandedly says something that's highly offensive to a certain group, but maybe does it unintentionally, right? Doesn't understand that this language is not appropriate in this, in this setting. And either one can be quite challenging for a teacher to deal with without practice and experience, right? And we don't want to escalate a situation, we don't want to traumatize a child, but we don't always know how to handle it. And so it seemed to me a really important missing piece is when is teacher training going to happen? And not just somebody lecturing at the teachers of this is our new policy and you have to abide by it, but giving teachers real opportunities to have role-playing or examples that you can practice saying things, as we all need to do, you know, for bystander intervention, that practicing of how do we intervene when something that we all wish had never been said was said? And so I would just ask that you look carefully at putting that piece in and maybe think of, you know, education faculty at Radford who might have some expertise to be able to help, help design such a training. But even, I guess, just the teachers themselves coming together, that opportunity to practice with your peers, I think can help move people a long way. And the other piece that wasn't clear to me, but it was maybe just not on the timeline, is accountability, right? So if something like that were to happen, you know, little Joey says something in class that is really offensive to little Sally, but as a teacher, I don't know how to handle it, and I just sort of say, oh, let's move on, right? And Sally then goes to complain to the guidance counselor or her parents about this traumatic thing that happened, and I don't report it to anybody, right? There should be consequences for me as a teacher, right? And it wasn't clear how that was going to happen, right? Who's, if, who's going to come back and say, I need further training? Or if I really can't handle these situations, maybe, you know, I'm not skilled enough to be in a classroom. So I just ask you to look at those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Next up is Chris Thomas.
Chris Thomas, Christiansburg. Members of the board, I'd like to take, talk to you today a little bit about artificial intelligence. At your recent meeting last month, you got a presentation on the use of AI in our classrooms. Now... Now, I'm not an educator by trade, and I claim no special knowledge of education policy, but I'm a computer scientist, and I've done a fair bit of my own development with and against AI. So let me say what should have been said in that meeting last month. AI is dangerous, not in the sense that you have to worry about students named Sarah Connor, but dangerous in the sense that a rotary saw or a welding torch is dangerous. AI enables cheerful, credulous humans to make very serious mistakes, and the moment you don't respect it for what it is, it'll bite you. It does this in two ways: false confidence and forced randomness. False confidence is a consequence of how AIs, especially large language models, create responses. In fact, you might have seen a recent viral example of this wherein people asked ChatGPT how many Rs there are in the word strawberry and got the confident response of two. They couldn't even argue the AI into saying three. And this happens because an LLM isn't reasoning about the response it gives. It's more akin to a very sophisticated autocomplete, but it presents its response as if it is both authoritative and very considered. It's one thing to get a response like that from a chatbot, but it's altogether another to get it from a teacher who has used a chatbot. We tell our students that Wikipedia isn't a valid source because it can be edited by just anyone, but at least the people editing Wikipedia are trying to produce factual content. AI chatbots are trained on Wikipedia, and they're trying to produce content that could be mistaken for factual content. One of the ways that these bots do that is by incorporating an element of forced randomness into their responses. The math behind this is complicated, but for a developer building an education app, it's just the value indicating how chaotic they want the responses to be. More chaos feels less robotic, but it also means the chatbot doesn't return the same result for every question, for the same question. As you might imagine, that's great for generating a poem, but it's somewhat less great for explaining how the Pythagorean theorem works. In tightly constrained situations, that chaos leaves the AI to leave out details and make up extra ones to pad out those randomness margins. All this is to say that working with AI, like working with any tool, is a skill, and it's a skill that requires knowledge and discipline. The AI sounds human, it seems intelligent, it looks authoritative, but it's none of those things. So by all means, let's teach our kids to live and work and play in a world with AI, because that's the world they will inherit. But let's encourage our teachers to be suspicious to the point of paranoia about this technology, rather than glibly and uncritically incorporating it into their curricula in the pursuit of the latest technological novelty, because it will swear to you that there are two Rs in strawberry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And with that, public address is closed. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider those items approved. Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Purcell and Dr. Gitchry, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And that takes us into our business meeting. We'll start with the report from Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. I only have a few things to go over. The dissolution of the United States Department of Education marks a significant turning point in American education, presenting both challenges and possibilities. While opinions on this decision will vary, our commitment to providing a safe, inclusive, and high-quality education for all of our students remains unwavering. The US Department of Education has been instrumental in protecting students' rights and supporting national academic standards. Its absence necessitates collaboration between states and local districts to ensure these critical functions continue. The practical implications of this decision, particularly regarding federal funding for our programs like Title I and Special Education, are still unclear. We are actively working with state and national partners to understand the next steps and to advocate the necessary resources. The information from the VDOE and our state leadership associations indicates that our federal funding in these areas will remain intact, and we hope that is the case. The federal government provides in our, in our current budget approximately $6 million of the total budget. During this transition, the roles of our teachers, staff, and families are more crucial than ever. We will continue to provide, to provide updates as we learn more and remain dedicated to supporting our students' futures. We encourage everyone to stay informed, engaged, and supportive of one another as we navigate this uncertainty together. I also want to comment on the recent loss of a young student in Roanoke County, which is a profound tragedy that deeply affects our neighboring communities. This heartbreaking event underscores the urgent need for our schools and communities to intensify efforts in addressing bullying and supporting the mental health, mental health of our students. As educators and community leaders, we must ensure that our schools are safe... Uh, I'm sorry, that are safe havens where every child feels valued and protected. The Montgomery County Public Schools remains committed to fostering an environment where students can thrive without fear of harassment. We will continue to implement and strengthen programs that promote kindness, inclusivity, and open communication. To the family, friends, to the family, friends, and the Roanoke County community, we extend our deepest condolences. May we honor this young student's memory by coming together to create a more compassionate and supportive environment for all of our children. Additionally, I want to report that the vape detectors have been installed in all of our secondary schools, with the exception of Christiansburg High School, which is currently undergoing a significant renovation. And we looked at possibly putting them in at that time there, but the cost would be significant to put them in then take them out because they have to be wired, they're not wireless devices. I look forward to reporting back to the school board on the effect those will have on reducing, hopefully, the vaping incidents in our schools. And lastly, I'm extremely happy to report that construction has begun for the Easton Montgomery High School Track Replacement Project and appears to be going well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Next up, Mr. Brandon Keith, our principal at Charlesville Middle School, will present information regarding the SMS Extended School Year Grant.
Believe so. It's not working.
Okay.
That's good. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bragan. I'm here to talk about the extended school year work that we've been doing at Charlesville Middle School for the past 17 months. So we had two things in mind when we initially received the planning grant from the Virginia Department of Education for the Extended School Year Grant of $50,000. Number one, we wanted to look at some opportunities to think outside the box, to get our students engaged and hopefully to improve student achievements at Charlesville Middle School. And then number two, we were looking at a way to get students excited and looking forward to coming to school and helping out with our chronic absenteeism rate. So we assembled our committee in the fall of 2023. As you all can see, we have the committee members mentioned right here. We had a nice variety of staff members on that committee. The administrative team, we have been the project leads. Our school counselor was involved, we had representation from all of our core and elective subjects. Also had foreign language involved as well, along with our athletic director and our PBIS coordinator. So we had a wide range of staff members on the team, as well as three parent representatives to help us out with that perspective as we wanted to include stakeholders in our decision-making. So right here, this is just a list of our meeting dates. Our initial meeting was in late November of 2023. We then decided to break up into subcommittees. Those subcommittees focused on finances. We had a calendar subcommittee and also a student engagement and curriculum subcommittee. And those respective committees have, have done some pretty significant work as we worked through the process. So right here, I have our vision statements, which I will read. This was a very important piece if we, as we got started, so we really could kind of focus in on our top goals and what we really wanted our students and staff to get out of our extended school year program. So vision statement number one, our summer program will provide an engaging, student-centered, learning experience that empowers students to take ownership of their education. Through hands-on, project-based activities, students will have the opportunity to explore their interests, reinforce core skills, and develop new ones. Vision statement number two, we envision a collaborative environment where students actively shape the learning process by voicing their needs, sharing their perspectives, and pursuing inquiries that spark their curiosity. Teachers will act as facilitators, adapting instruction to meet students where they are, while incorporating innovative, research-based practices. Vision statement three, community partnerships will allow students to apply their knowledge in authentic contexts and gain real-world experience. Local organizations, businesses, and experts will contribute their talents and resources, fostering connections that extend learning beyond the classroom walls. And our final vision statement, by promoting student agency, embracing teacher creativity, and forging community ties, our summer program will cultivate a love of learning. Students will emerge as confident, self-directed learners prepared for future academic and personal success. So initially, we looked at possibly doing a calendar change, and as we did that work, we collaborated with Lynchburg City Schools, with Bass Elementary. And Bass Elementary has run an extended school year, actually a year-round school program for almost two decades. So we collaborated with their staff and got some feedback from them about their instructional setup, along with their intercession days. So we also did some work with Chesterfield County, looking at some elementary and secondary schools, primarily middle schools. And most schools had a setup of six weeks on and a week off. Now, some of those weeks off involve what are called intercession days, and during those intercession days, students weren't required to come but were offered opportunities to come in mainly for enrichment programs. So the biggest obstacles during our research, when we looked at a full calendar change, Charlesville Middle School at the time of us receiving the planning grant in the fall of 2023 was the only school in Montgomery County with that planning grant. So that meant if everything would have gone through and been approved, we would have been the only school with a different calendar, which presented some pretty difficult challenges in terms of sibling groups and also families trying to get childcare, along with some of our staff members that have, have spouses and also students in Montgomery County. So we would have been on different schedules. So we ultimately elected that that was too difficult of an option for us to do with just one single building in the school division. We met with Salem City Schools in January of 2024. Dr. Jamie Saltis, who is now in Roanoke County, but at the time was the Assistant Superintendent in Salem City. And what Salem City did with their Extended School Year Program, they developed a summer enrichment and remediation program. And, you know, once we sat down with them and kind of got some details about how they operated their program, we felt like that would be a much more effective program without us having to make any major changes division-wide outside of Charlesville Middle School. So we came up with what is called the MSEP, the Mustang, the, actually the Mustang Summer Enrichment Program. And it is a six-week instructional program. And for year one, we would invite all of our students. Now, of course, last year we had six weeks of summer school, but this year we'll be back to our four-week structure. But we're looking at a six-week program for summer. We, of course, would target our students with disabilities, as well as students that have not met proficiency goals in math and reading. But ultimately, the first year with us having only around 200 students, we would look to invite all of our students to participate. Our instructional targets would be math, reading, writing, science, social studies, and also STEM work. And a big goal of ours, especially with rolling this out and trying to get kids excited about it, is to have a pretty good balance between enrichment and also remediation and academics. Project-based learning, of course, is a very strong instructional strategy that really helps us to reel our middle school kids in to instruction. We also talked about the importance of real-world applications. So we, we've looked to set up some field trips. We look at either a field trip every week or every other week. We looked at Explorer Park. We also looked at field trips to Virginia Tech and Radford University, field trips to Dixie Caverns. And also, we've looked at some instructional activities that can be woven into those field trips. We also are looking at some virtual reality headsets that our ITRTs have helped us to look at some programming for, where we can do some pretty neat instructional activities. And then our curriculum administrators have also put together some lists of resources that we've been able to work through and vet in hopes of getting as well. So the benefits of our Mustang Summer Enrichment Program, of course, a, a new school model. I think one of the most important things when we talk about project-based learning is us being able to start projects in the summertime and then continuing to work on those projects when we come back in the fall. So we talked about some ongoing project work through different areas of academics. Also, it would be a goal of ours to improve our chronic absenteeism. And of course, student engagement plays a big role in improving chronic absenteeism. So we felt if we could get kids excited over the summer and also, once again, start on those, those projects and project-based learning, that they would have something to look forward to coming back in the fall and be a little bit more consistent with their attendance. When we looked at benefits of a summer enrichment program versus a full calendar change, we wouldn't have any calendar changes. Our schedules would be aligned with the, the other schools in the school division. And also, we wouldn't have any challenges with staff not being aligned with their schedules with families. So moving forward, everything I just mentioned, we are in the process of submitting a startup application for the startup grant from the Virginia Department of Education. The maximum that you can receive is $500,000. Right now, we have about $420,000 worth of materials, projects, field trips, guest speakers, and things of that nature. And that will be due in August. So our school-based committee will meet again in April, well, later this month, in April and then in May. And over the summer, we will work to get that application submitted. And our goal is to hopefully roll out the Mustang Summer Enrichment Program for the summer of 2026. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the presentation. Any, any questions from the board?
Sorry.
Yeah, right?
Sounds very good. Thank you.
How has staff embraced or not embraced this idea?
The reception has been a lot more positive since we have eliminated the calendar change option. The, our core teachers are excited about it, as well as our elective teachers, especially with the enrichment piece, because they get some opportunities to kind of extend what they do in their elective classes. You know, some of our electives, like Family Consumer Science, are only, you've got Facts I and Facts II, which are a semester each. And some of our elective teachers are excited because sometimes they feel like that one semester is not enough time for them to get activities done, so they'll be able to kind of elevate their instruction to the next level as well. So things have been a lot more positive. Our committee put out a Google form just to kind of get some insight from teachers about how much of the six weeks they would be available for. So we offered everybody an opportunity to work in two-week segments, and they don't have to make a commitment till the entire summer. So I'd say things are pretty positive overall with staff.
Dr. Gitchry?
Thanks for the presentation. I think it's a good opportunity for continuing education for our students throughout the year. So it'll, it'll be available for all of the students in middle school in the Charlesville Strand. Is that...
Yes, sir. Everybody at Charlesville Middle School will be invited for the first year.
Okay. And fifth, there'll be eighth graders that are invited or fifth graders that are invited?
We're planning to invite rising fifth through rising eighth.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
Thank you so much, Mr. Keith. It's good to see you. I was really excited to see the focus on project-based learning. That's just something that I, I find very exciting in, in education. I think it makes things more, more relevant. I find very exciting in, in education, I think it makes things more, more relevant, um, and something. That I've learned in, in my work outside of this is that. Besides just engaging projects, um, group dynamics and working together in groups, um. We don't tend to be very good at, good at that, uh, it's something I work on with my own students and, um. You know, we can all, we can all get better with those kinds of things, so all that said. Do you have any examples, I know that we're kind of two year or a year or so out from when you would. Start, but what are some examples of some of the, the projects that, um, you're hoping to. Provide for kids?
Sure, so we, we talked about, um, our science classes and doing some work with developing a school garden. Um, and once again, that, that was an example of a project that we would start in the summertime that students would have to come back and care for throughout the year. Um, and then, uh, I know I mentioned Family Consumer Science and Agri Science, they had mentioned. Uh, like in Family Consumer Science, being able to, to do more cooking, um, development of, of different types of cuisines from around the world. Uh, versus kind of like that small, uh, amount of time they, they have in their curriculum, so those are two I can think about off the top of my head.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Ms. Bond.
Well, it sounds very exciting and I hope the excitement stays in a higher location and, and all goes well for you.
Thank you.
Ms. Frisell.
I'm excited about this, um, especially for Shawsville Middle, but also for the rest of our students that might be able to attend. Um, I'm really excited about the, uh, academic hours. That it's going to continue to go up and possibly help with the gap, um, that we're at now. Uh, along with the help of the retention over the summer, because I know, you know, I, I know. Teachers struggle with the retention part of it and it's not just with our special needs children, but it's with, it's with all of our children when we have a break that big. Um, I know we do have problems getting teachers in the summer, because I know we have dealt with that with summer school in the past. Have we thought about any other possible incentives, um, to. Get our teachers maybe wanting to do this or be more involved, or maybe that's something we can think about. Um, I'm not really sure what we can offer, um, and I think we might could possibly even round up some volunteers. And could possibly get some kids going for that A scholarship that have to do the eighty hour volunteer work. To come and help us out with that possibly, um, so I didn't know, um, if you thought. I, I think the two week is a, is a good start, but I do know that we struggle with that, with, with the summer. And I do understand that the teachers want their breaks and I get it, um, but I am excited for our kids. Not only for the educational piece, but for the field trips and, and giving them actually. I think something to look forward to in the summer, which would also tie in with, with childcare as well for a lot of people, so. I think it's a win win and, uh, how about a garden somewhere within that land, you know? Digging up and planting some things and maybe we could do a flower garden and a vegetable garden and I can come up with some other ideas too, maybe.
Wonderful, sounds good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, Dr. Gettrick.
Thank you, I thank you for all the work you and your team have put in, into the planning for this, um, I know it's a lot of work. Uh, so the, the four hundred and twenty thousand, is that for a year period? How long would that, that implementation grant last?
It's a year period.
It's a year period.
Yes, sir.
And do you have any sense of what the cost will be afterwards, like have you? I didn't see anything about the cost of the program, um, has that, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that's been part of your planning. So beyond, you know, you're going to have the four hundred and twenty if you get the implementation grant, but. What, you know, what are the resources that we would need as a division or to implement this? Not just being dependent upon a grant, you know, for after the grant period, do you have a sense of that?
Uh, sure, so, um. In terms of the resources we need from the school division, I mean, it would just be support with, you know, making sure we get some assistance with transportation. Um, and things like that, so of course, when trips are set up, that money would come out of the grant. Uh, as well, so I mean, the grant covers just about all of our needs initially. Uh, of course, if there are things that we need some support with, we'll kind of ask along the way, but the way we. Um, factored in how much we would apply for, we factored in salaries, we factored in trips, we factored in transportation. Uh, we factored in, uh, academic resources as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, um, well, good luck on that, uh, implementation grant.
Thanks a bunch, I appreciate it.
And I'll just add, you know. My thanks as well, definitely appreciate all the work, you know, all the homework that your team did, right, talking to other, other school districts who have done similar things or. Or, or different kinds of things, um, built out the pros and cons and. And, um, look like you're trending towards a, towards a great plan here, so definitely excited for you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
So you said Bassett does year round schools?
It's a Bass Elementary in Lynchburg City.
That was just one school?
Yes, ma'am, they're the only one that does it.
So with some of the disruptions that you talked about, that you all looked at, how did they say they worked through those issues?
You know, I think initially they, they thought it was a very important need and, um, you know, despite some challenges, they were able to, to make it work. Um, although the entire, the rest of the school division is on a different calendar, so. Um, I didn't get a whole lot of information about the initial process because the principal that started it is no longer there. Um, but it, it seems like once they got everybody on the same page and were able to get the ball rolling, it, it's been a pretty positive program. Um, I know there, they did talk about, uh, the community support that they've gotten, Bass Elementary is, uh, in, in inner city area of Lynchburg City. And they said the families have really bought in, uh, kind of from the beginning and their support has grown. Uh, since they started their year round school, I said, about twenty years ago.
Wow.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I appreciate also all the work that you all have put into this and. I would like to see the whole county go to a year round schedule, which I hope we will be talking about soon, so. This is a good way to help get the things going, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, great, thank you, Ms. Keith.
Thank you all.
Alright, next up, Eddie Walters, our Director of Transportation, Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, will present. An update on summer capital projects, Jordan Stump, our Supervisor of Purchasing, and Tim Shepard, our Construction Project Manager. Will also be available for questions.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the board, Dr. Bragan. Um, we're here tonight to talk to you about proposed, um, summer construction projects. Um, this is a list of five of the larger, um, proposed summer projects. Um, the first being, um, two complete roof replacements for Auburn Elementary and Kipps Elementary. Sorry, um, if approved, um, this project would be scheduled to be completed before the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six. School year. Another proposed, uh, project would be, um. Replacing the original windows with new vinyl, vinyl windows for Montgomery Central and the Operation Center. Another proposed project would be the, uh, replacing the original metal pipes. Um, with new pipes for Montgomery Central, um, and the Operation Center, um, the interior water lines. Um, this project would also center around Montgomery Central's, um. Summer, um, so that it could be completed before the start of the school year. And the last proposed summer project would be, um, the expansion of the Operation Center parking lot. Um, this would include, um, additional parking spaces. This would include additional parking spaces, um, for, um, school buses. As well as repaving the roadway coming into the Operation Center off of Depot. And repairing, um, the parking lot, um, the vehicle parking lot.
Several of these projects currently are in the competitive bid process. So once we have finalized costs for all of those, we will put together capital transfer requests. That will be submitted at future school board meetings for your consideration.
Questions?
Okay, great, thanks for that presentation, school board, any questions, comments? Who wants to start?
I do want to say thank you for getting that parking lot done finally. Because, uh, and it, could we move that to the top of the list if nobody? But anyway, thank you for putting this together and all the information, um. Hopefully we can get all this completed and it's much needed, so thank you.
Uh, Dr. Gettrick.
I don't have any questions, I'm just glad to, to see some of these priorities, particularly with Montgomery Central, um, so terrific.
Ms. Franklin.
Are these all the projects for the summer or just the major ones?
Uh, these would be the major ones, yes, ma'am.
So it would be nice to see a list of everything we're going to be working on, just so we. Know what's happening.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and yeah, those windows at Montgomery Central, I don't even know how they're still, still staying in. Thank you.
Dr. Brown.
Yeah, thanks for putting this together, uh, just a question about the windows going in at Montgomery Central. Um, are we going to get the, the building power washed before those windows go in, so we're not power washing brand new windows?
Yeah, I believe that's something that we can definitely do, yes, sir.
And then for the, uh, for the buses going in and out. What's the access to the roads look like at Montgomery Central? Or do they have easy access, easy merging in and out of the traffic situations there?
So currently we have a, it's basically a one way, one way in, one way out, so they come in off of Depot and then they exit out. On Shelton Street, um, so then they can go right or left on Shelton.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Frisell.
Okay, I can answer that question, Ms. Walter? And by the way, Mr. Walters is acting in his capacity as the Acting Director of Facilities. I thought someone would ask why the Transportation Director is putting this presentation. But we appreciate that, he stepped in and would be, help us out until we find a replacement for Mr. Harris. Um, Auburn Elementary School has had significant roof leaks, significant, there were times he had emergency repairs and coming there where there was. Buckets of water coming down in the cafeteria, so it's, it's time. And that would be the same at Kipps, Kipps, as far as I know, that was brought to my attention, didn't have as many leaks. That got our attention, but you know, the lifespan of a roof is typically twenty to twenty-five years and. Auburn Elementary celebrated its twenty-fifth anniversary last year and Kipps is around that same age as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond.
Well, I'm just gonna kudos on the bus thing, because I've been fussing about that for years, you know? No sense in paying rent on another lot when we don't have to, so, um, and. E- even though there's concerns with the buses pulling out, I mean, those were, that was a school for many, many, many years and buses ran on those roads. Constantly every day, so, um, thank you so much for that, because that's, that was one of my things, um. And the water pipes, because I know that was some concerns we had with people drinking the water with some of the old pipes and, and the windows are horrible, so. Um, I mean, the front looks great, but you know, some of the other ones are bad shape, so thank you so much, those are great things.
And that's actually the, the thanks as well, and this is, this is a lot of, uh, good products over the summer, so these will, these will come back to us. As, as capital expenses for, for consideration, um. Will they all come back at once, will they be spread out, mixed in with other things, I assume?
That, that will be based on, um, the, what we get as far as results from the, the bids that, that kind of, they, most of them are closing within the next week or two. So we'll take a look at that, um, we will work to use up the remaining fiscal year twenty twenty-five, uh, capital funds and then. Some can actually be awarded, um, in July and beyond, and we would present those at the first July meeting for twenty-six funding.
Okay. Okay, great. Yeah.
At, um, the Operation Center, will we be able to put all of our buses there? And not have to use the other lot?
Yes, um, the additional, um. Bus parking would allow us to, um, move our buses from, from Wimmer. Like we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to park any buses there anymore, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, great, board, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight. Alright, next, um, Dr. Bragan, our Superintendent, will provide an update on M C P S capital projects. And a presentation will be provided at the April fifteenth meeting.
Thank you, Chair Hudson, yeah, as you can see and I shared with the school board, I think we did it this morning, um. We wanted to get it out in front of all of you and for the public, so we could have discussion on this, um, at our next board meeting, I believe. On Tax Day, April fifteenth, um, this is just for your information, now, these are the five schools we want to focus on. There's a couple of changes to what we presented initially, um, with some modifications, you know, one of the school board members asked if we could accompany this with a map. And the regions that would show where each elementary school, um, what their catchment area is, and. There is something on the website for that, for parents to utilize, so you can see if I live in this area, which school I go to. But we'll put something together in a PDF format that would be easier for people to, uh, to see that. So really tonight's was just to share it with all of you, um, and to share it with the public as it gets out with the agenda. And for discussion and a formal presentation with myself and Mr. Bauer on, um, April fifteenth.
So you're not, you're not planning to walk through any of it tonight, or just?
I wasn't going to unless you want me to, that wasn't the plan, you want, you want me to walk through it?
We kind of just got it a little bit ago, so I haven't had much of a chance to digest it.
Well, that's what, that was the plan, that I would just share with you and this would be on the agenda, so the public would see it, so that we could have the, the discussion. An informed discussion on the fifteenth was, was my plan, but I'd be happy to go through it tonight if you want.
What do we think, board?
I think a quick run through of the slides would be good.
Maybe some highlights, maybe, just so we can kind of get, get the lay of the land here.
Alrighty, as you can see, you know, there's five schools that we talked about and we've had this conversation now going on, probably almost a year. Um, the most pressing need are the three elementary schools. And if you ask us to prioritize, those would be the priority, the three elementary schools in Blacksburg, Harding Avenue Elementary School, Gilbert Lincoln Elementary and Margaret Beeks. Coming up next, that would be Montgomery Central and Shawsville Middle School. You know, they're running, uh, neck and neck for which would be the fourth project if we had to triage them as far as monetary, uh, needs. That, and some of that, as I go through this, would depend on what that development looks like that is being proposed down in Shawsville. In, in Ellison area, it could be four hundred and nine homes. Which would make an increase significantly in the middle school population over time, we predict it could be as much as three hundred and ten students. That would move Shawsville Middle School to number four and Montgomery Central to number five, go to the next slide. If you look at the enrollments there, that shows a ten year enrollment span. Um, what's not shown there on the Shawsville Middle School is the enrollment that, that may increase. When that development, uh, comes to fruition, now, we project about three hundred and nine students. But obviously that wouldn't be all middle school students all at once, the houses wouldn't be done all at once, so there's a timeframe there that we'd have to. Um, go through as the buildings became, became built and it, they became settled. But we do anticipate if at some point that number goes through the entire school system, we would have to put in some more additions on Shawsville Middle School. It would be significantly more than a hundred ninety-three students they currently have. So we kind of presented this last time, the Harding Avenue Elementary School would be an upgrade, you know, it's an open model classroom, they would have. Remove that open model, um, design and would be more individual, individual classrooms aligned by grade level. And upgrading all the areas that are in there is, according, including the H rack and the roof and things like that, that people don't think. Are real pretty or. like that, that people don't think are real pretty or really, you know, something that's going to impact. But if you're going to update the structure, you got to update all the other stuff as well. So, that would be, go to the next slide, please. Depending on where we put that, the cost range for that total renovation, and that's the footprint for Harding Avenue Elementary School, approximately eight acres, is between $24 million and $29 million. Go to the next slide. And that's a breakdown. And we kind of presented on this already and just fine-tuned it on the last presentation when we went over what that would look like as far as the renovation, renovated areas of Harding Avenue.
Similar to Christiansburg Primary?
Correct.
As far as doing the walls.
Go to the next one, please. All right, Gilbert Linkus, Gilbert Linkus School would be the next one. Go to the next slide, please. And their footprint is a little bit larger, almost 12 and a half acres. And their upgrade would be similar. You know, upgrading the classrooms, upgrading, go to the next slide, because it has more of a detail. You know, some of the classroom space there, we want to make the classes larger. And if you look at the end of the building, there'd be four additional classrooms because the classrooms that are currently there, if you walk in the building, go to the left, are small. We'd like to make those bigger. Each of these would also have a renovated library. We don't think the library space is up to speed or at least up to par in what some of our other library spaces are. And then everyone talked about the multipurpose gymnasium, cafeteria. And we want to separate those out in both of these buildings as well. And the projected cost for Gilbert Linkus renovations would be, the low end would be $24 and a half million, the high end would be $31.7 million. Next slide. Okay? So, in talking with our architect, one of the proposals was that you could combine those two schools. I'm not saying that we're going to do that, but it's an option if you want to look at the enrollment numbers. Create one big school for Harding Avenue and Gilbert Linkus Elementary School, which would have the capacity of 700 students. We're not at 700 students in either one of those now. If we combined, it would be more closer to 600. But that's an option. And if you, you would be, you would be able to do that and still keep the schools open while the construction was going on, if you could see the footprint there of the current Gilbert Linkus building, which would be utilized while the construction was going on to the new building. Again, we're not proposing that. It's an option. Now, the cost for the brand-new building is more than to renovate the two separate buildings. So, that's also something we would want to talk about. The total cost in that from the low and the high estimate is $62 million or as high as $74 million. Next slide. And that, that's what the breakdown would look like for, you know, the classroom wings. Obviously, instead of having two or three classes for a grade level, you would have four and five, depending on the current grade level and enrollment. Margaret Beeks Elementary School, it would be renovated, as we had talked about previously. And there were many additional changes that we added to this from the last presentation. Go to the next slide, please. That footprint is large as well. It's 13 and a half acres almost. And the cost for there would be between $25 million and $31 million from the low to the high. And that's the primary areas that would be renovated. Again, the biggest thing we've heard from the schools is, especially in the primary wing, separating out the classrooms, making sure they had doors and walls, and taking those cubbies out of the hallways there, and providing the space that's dedicated to cafeteria and gymnasium and separating those out. All right, Montgomery Central is just old. It was built in 1934, I believe, and needs a lot of TLC if we wanted to renovate that. We're going to do the windows this year. We're proposing to do the windows regardless because they need to be done. They need to be done for the insulation effect, but just the aesthetics and their functionality as well. But there's a lot of things that need to be done in that building, if you go to the next slide. The footprint wouldn't change that much, but there'd be a lot of interior upgrades, including the HVAC, the floors, the tiles, the exterior, the parking lot. And we would, that costs anywhere from the low number to 13 and a half million to approximately 16 million, or 16.3. Shawsville Middle was built about the same time. I guess the Public Works Act in the 1930s hit Southwest Virginia hard. We got a lot of buildings done in those 1930 area, right? And I think this is 1935 as well, or somewhere in that area. It's old. It's actually really well-maintained, though. When you walk that building on the interior, it's amazing how well-maintained some of that is. Going to the next slide. So, the option there, if you can see the footprint, where the school is, is to the left there, towards the railroad track, which is about six acres. And the Old Town Road where the field is there is about almost 12 acres. So, if we were going to renovate the high school, because the age of the materials and when you take apart old walls and things, you find things you weren't anticipating and that require more money to mitigate and change. So, the cost for this one was pretty high. It's $25 million for a renovation low or $30 million for the high. Go to the next slide, please. All right. There's also a possibility of putting a new middle school there. The area where the Old Town Field is now, making that the new school. And it would be able to accommodate 500 students, which would be enough for any anticipated growth that we may have down there with the new development. Again, not saying to do that. It's an option, though. It'd be a newer school. And the cost, again, for that would be much more than renovating the old school. The low is $70 million, the high is almost $85 million. Next slide. Is that the end? And that's the end. Now, when we present this formally, we would give you exact totals, what highs and lows would be, would give you what our priorities, what our priorities would be, that we feel are the most pressing needs for all of you to discuss and talk about and debate, and let us know what the next steps are. And I'm sure there'll be some discussion on refining the process and the plan that we're going to present on the 15th. Then we'll bring it back to you all. And hopefully, we get an idea of what the school board wants to put out for our capital projects for the next couple of years, that then we could then share officially with the board of supervisors and see about securing the funding that would be required to do that.
Okay, great. Great. Thanks for that. School Board, any questions tonight?
So, I just have one piece of information I'd like to see. So, if there was a possibility that at some point, maybe, that Gilbert Linkus and Harding would be combined, then we would have a property that would be in excess, to know what that revenue might look like to help offset construction.
That's a great idea. It's almost 11 acres in the middle of a very densely populated area, right? I don't know what our possibilities are legally or what we could or could not use that for. I have no idea. But if I was a developer, I'd put student housing up there. But I'm just saying.
We just need to set up. Blacksburg needs to tell them what they can do with it. We've been down that road.
Probably shouldn't have said that, but you know.
Enjoy the emails coming through your inbox.
But Ms. Franklin, Ms. Franklin is right. And again, I'm not proposing that. It's something we looked at and we want to explore financially, if it's even feasible. It's a big piece of property in the middle of a densely populated area in Blacksburg that I'm sure would warrant a lot of discussion on this board and board of supervisors in the town of Blacksburg.
Go around, change the order. Dr. Gettrich?
Boy, did you just open up a can of worms. Just one quick question or comment. I know when we had this last presentation where we got more information after the community feedback and there was that list of priorities. I remember we had a discussion. And I know that one of the things that I had suggested was prioritizing ADA compliance and the areas are not being renovated. So, I don't, I don't know if some of the feedback we gave at that meeting made its way in. I don't see that reflected in the, because the prior, it's still low on the priority list, the ADA compliance in a number of these buildings. I just saw that. And I was wondering if the feedback the board already provided on the plans got incorporated into, because I didn't see that. But it might just be that one issue.
No, that's fair, Dr. Gettrich. My expectation would be any renovation in any building, and we bring it up to ADA compliance, whether that is exactly what it's, if that whole wing's getting renovated or not, we have to, the expectation would be it all becomes ADA compliant.
Right. I remember that discussion where it's required in the areas that are being renovated. But one of the suggestions was to make sure the building as a whole was ADA compliant, because if there are parts of the building that are not being renovated, those don't necessarily have to be brought up into compliance. I just remember part of that, for me, that would be, I would like to see that to be a priority across these buildings.
We're on the same page. And perhaps I didn't articulate it well enough. I would expect that any building that's being renovated, the entire building brings, is brought up to ADA.
Okay.
What the expectation would be for everything, you know, egress and all that stuff.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. I won't say anymore about the combining of those two buildings, as tempted as I am. I'm curious to know where that request, if it came from the community, where it came from. But I'm just not even going to, I'm just, I'm going to go there.
Ms. Pardon?
Okay. So, thank you, Dr. Bragan, for going over this. And I did have one thing. And the only reason it came to mind was because of something that we ended up doing at Christiansburg Elementary. And I couldn't tell by the diagram if we were doing it or not, but you may not know this yet. Are we planning on possibly closing in the back hallway to the classrooms? If I'm making any sense, at Margaret Beeks and Gilbert Linkus. I think that was something that was done at Christiansburg Elementary. And I think it was, it was needed and it was, but I couldn't tell from the diagram if, if we were planning on doing that in that renovation in the back of the hallways.
Yeah, I think you mean the primary wing?
Yes.
And where they have the cubbies?
Yes.
And there's no real doors to those classrooms?
Yes.
100%.
And maybe just for a possible safety thing, too, maybe? That was my, that was just my first concern.
You can't have a lockdown in those classrooms. You can lock that door that goes to the corridor.
And that would be.
But the individual classrooms are not separated because the corridor goes in the middle with the cubbies on both sides and the bathrooms. That would be all a hallway like it is at Christiansburg Primary.
Okay. That was all I had.
Ms. Bond?
Okay, and I'm going to ask, just because I know it's going to be a popular question when all this comes down, the comparison to what we just spent on the Christiansburg project strands for the elementary schools, because those prices weren't near what we're looking at here. And they had definitely a lot of the same concerns. And we kept those, we kept those prices down. So, and we only did a certain amount because of that. So, I know my community and I know some of those questions that are going to be. So, when we give these specs and projected costs, I would like for us to also, you know, share, I would like to know exactly what we spent in the Christiansburg strand, because that was just two years ago. So, those are still pricey and they're, they're very similar, because we've got some, some high budgets here. And, and we came in with some high budgets for the Christiansburg schools and, and cut them down.
Okay. We could definitely do it.
Ms. Frisell?
Just to make sure that I heard things correctly, Dr. Bragan, you framed the combination of Linkus and Harding as an idea that came from the architect?
That's correct.
So, I, I will hold back more inquiry from now, but I would, I would expect a great deal of community engagement needs to happen before, you know, moving forward with something of this magnitude.
I believe that would be 100% accurate. I'm not suggesting we do that. I was asked to explore options. And I asked the architect, what would be some options? Here's the property. Here's the school enrollment. What do you see as some options? That was an option that the architect said we can build and make work for that number of students. I've said it three times already. I'm not suggesting we do that. That's an option that we're sharing. That's a potential. And if you looked at that option, from just from a cost perspective, it wasn't cheaper. I would think it would be cheaper to make one larger building than to renovate two smaller buildings. So, that's a conversation that we would go deeper into with the architect. Well, why is that? Why would that even be? I don't have that answer. I don't know that.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. And I also was just, just construction materials. I, I can't imagine having to be an estimator right now in that field with tariffs and, and just the chaos currently in that industry. So, even something from two years ago may not really be a relevant baseline anymore. But we'll get more information. So, thank you.
Dr. Rounchy?
Sure. Yeah, so, I don't understand the combination of Gilbert Linkus and Harding as it's put forth here. Currently, unless I have some numbers that are incorrect, if we just take Gilbert Linkus and Margaret Beeks' capacity, the two of those schools have an excess capacity of 341 students, which is greater than the total enrollment at Harding Elementary School. If we were to do the renovations at Gilbert Linkus as proposed, that is not the, the expand, the new, completely new building, we would have a total capacity in excess of 384, or sorry, 385 students. Where the current enrollment at Harding Elementary is 279. So, even if those two schools absorbed all of Harding Elementary, we would have over 100-student capacity excess for the, for that region of the county.
That's another possibility, if you wanted to explore.
And that has no added cost. That's just the, the cost of the reno at Gilbert Linkus, the reno at Margaret Beeks. And you, you take out the $25 million reno at Harding Elementary. It's a hard decision, but.
Just based on the numbers that we have here, that that's a possibility, you know, regarding the, the capacity for each of those buildings.
Right. What is, do we anticipate any kind of growth in student enrollment in that region of the county over the next decade?
The demographer that we had done a year and a half ago, I believe, our, our growth was fairly stable. We're, right now, we're around 9,400 students, 9,500 or so, including our preschools. And they projected that would be slightly, slightly declining for the next six or seven years and stable out at about 9,100. And not one of the schools that we currently have, again, according to the demographic, the demographic projection, would exceed their current capacity, which was surprising to me, because all the development going on in Prices Fork Road, I thought would definitely impact our high school, which is close to capacity, and our middle school over there. And the number that they gave me when the demographer went over that was 0.4 students per separate family house. And if you project out those numbers, that they would not exceed our capacity. So, as far as I know, no. Dr. Rounchy?
Similar, just so that we don't end up getting blindsided, are there any, and we'd have to check the county, or you probably have to check the county, are there any sections of land that could house an additional 500 housing, similar to Eastern Montgomery, in that portion of our county that represents those three schools?
We would have to look into that, right? I don't know what the zoning is or special use permits or what's been done so far. But I know when we had the demographic study done, they looked at all the building permits and projected out what that would look like for the next five years of building, right? Or what the land was being a proposal for special use or changes in the zoning. I don't know if they know, you know, who's going to sell 100-acre farm to put out. I don't, I don't know that. We could look into, see if I can get that information.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just if there even are those level of farms in that region. And then lastly, are we planning on extending, or do we have any plans to extend pre-K to 100% capacity or to 100% enrollment?
I would love to do pre-K for all three-year-old and four-year-old students. The problem is that the funding from the state, they have a number that they only provide us for. We've actually put a waiver in to go over our number next year. If we can find the funding, we would definitely do that. I think it's a better, and especially in some of our areas that don't have a large number of daycare providers for preschool for, for parents, if we could provide it, it would be a great benefit for them.
And if we did do that, what would the, what would the projected enrollment be?
I can get that exact number that may put it a little higher. Across the division, we used to have 750 kids at a grade level. We're not that large anymore. If you look at our first, second grades, they're under 600. So, if you project that back down, the preschool would have to be, depending on building base, on the catchment area, what that would be. But it would be under 600 students for grades through, age three and four.
Thank you.
I guess I'll lob in a couple of comments here.
Oh, I have another comment, whenever it's, whenever it's possible.
I'll go around and get.
I'll go around and get nowhere. But I just, I just want to lob a couple in here. So, I mean, certainly, this goes without saying, but any conversations that involve closing one of our schools needs to have significant community engagement, right? That was understatement from, from Ms. Purcell over here. And, you know, I think that, I'm not sure how we have that kind of conversation in a timeline that allows us to make the decisions that we're trying to make. So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's art of the possible in these slides here, but I don't know how we execute on any of that and try to get to the board supervisors and answer in the timeframe that we're talking. So, that's, that's an interesting challenge. Certainly open to suggestions around that. But, I mean, certainly when it comes to just trying to absorb the one school and two other schools, that's gonna put these schools at close to capacity to what they have. And so then, if we want to allow for additional capacity, it changes their designs again, potentially, right? So, we're just kinda caught in this loop, right? So, I mean, I think we need to, as a board, make some decisions pretty quickly about high-level direction, about what we want to do, so we can give Dr. Bragan and the architects some clearer direction. And I guess I would add though, and I think this is kinda following up with Dr. Guitry, I guess I expected, in what we are seeing tonight, a little bit more with respect to the administration's priorities around what, what, what we're seeing. Because this is kinda the same thing that we saw before, in the same order that it was before. So, I appreciate that we're gonna see it hopefully at the next meeting. But again, that's just gonna change our thought process around this again in terms of where we might draw a cutoff around some of the stuff that we're trying to do with each one of these schools. So, at some point, we gotta, we gotta lock a variable down, so we can start building around it. And I think, you know, whether we're going to talk about five schools or four schools, or new, brand-new schools, needs to be a decision that we make pretty quickly, so we can get some guidance. That's my opinion, but.
Okay. I, I wasn't, and that's, I'll take full ownership for the communication error. I wasn't planning on presenting tonight. I do plan to have that whole thing for you. I just was sharing information and get it out there into the ether, so people could talk, and then we could come and have the robust conversation.
Okay. Right.
And that's what we ask you to do, so appreciate that, because when we don't get the information, we're, that's right, so if we get it, we don't need to either. I mean, so thank you for saying, we asked for it. And that's as far as it went, is an informational piece, and whoever takes it away from that, other than that, that's on them.
So, we'll go back around. Dr. Guitry, I know you had some other comments.
Yes, well, it's true that you might not have been prepared. You did provide a document that entails combining two schools. So, I just wanna be on record saying that it would have to be an absolutely compelling presentation of information that's comprehensive, before I would be in favor of combining schools. If it just saves us $25 million upfront, that is not gonna be sufficient for me, because what I have heard are concerns about transportation, how you're gonna get the, the students, the children from one school to another. There are communities, there, there are parents who are proud walkers at Harding Avenue Elementary. Also, there are concerns about tax value, what happens? Because we know that the presence of schools in communities increases tax values for homeowners. That's gonna be a concern. So, I'm just gonna say that backing into this conversation through this planning raises a lot of concerns for me. And the absence of compelling evidence beyond, we're gonna, you can absorb them into another building and not be at capacity, but I, just the demographic information is not sufficient for me. So, I just wanna caution you right now that I'm, I'm in District G, and I'm gonna receive so many emails as a result of any suggestion in the absence of a compelling argument before this board. So, I just wanna put that out there, because, um, I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll go around again. Anybody else have anything else? Ms. Pardon?
No, just thanks for the information, Dr. Bragan. Again, I don't think we're trying to start something yet. I think this, again, was just information that Dr. Bragan was passing on to us from the architect. And I can tell you, in the past, there have been people that have talked about doing something down my way and getting rid of a school. So, this is not the first time combining or getting rid of a school has been talked about. So, not to say that it's gonna happen, but just saying, you know, this is just information.
Great, thanks. Ms. Bond?
I agree. It wasn't that long ago we heard that suggestion. And so, that's, again, what we do. We talk about all kinds of different scenarios. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen, but we at least discuss it.
Roger. Ms. Purcell?
I think I, I just shared the, the heart of my concern, that really significant community involvement needs to happen before we would even go forward with something like this. And I think just back of the napkin bean counting, and, you know, splitting kids to fill spaces doesn't really work when you think about what a school means to a community.
Dr. Rountri?
Yeah, I definitely agree that we need some community engagement on this, some weigh-in as to what their priorities are. There's a, there's a lot that could be done with $25 million plus real estate sales, as Ms. Franklin pointed out, that would, that would be collected from that. But, yeah, additional engagement. Of course, if we were going down those kinds of routes, we, we would add some additional capacity to those other schools, so it wouldn't be exactly the, uh, the prices that are there. But it wouldn't be, presumably, it would not be the $70 million that was put forth towards the large school in placement of Gilbert Linkus Elementary School.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so, Ms. Bond, Ms. Purcell pointed out, in Eastern Montgomery, on somewhat of a regular basis, combining the middle school with the high school and elementary school is thrown out there. And I want folks to remember, when we built Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, it was combining Shawsville and Ellis, and, well, Lafayette Elementary Schools were combined. And there was a lot of concern from community about that, until they walked into that building. And they love it. And as far as transportation, I think some of those children have to have more difficult transportation issues. So, everything needs to be on the table. That's what we ask for, and that's what we should have, especially when we're going to the board of supervisors and asking for funds. And quite frankly, we're not gonna be getting a lot of this anytime soon, but we still need to have a plan in place.
Ms. Franklin, we also did, if you remember, Bethel and Reiner into Auburn Elementary. We combined those, those schools as well.
Okay, great. I don't have anything else to add. Anything else, Board? All right. Well, thank you for impromptu presenting to us, and I appreciate it. Clearly, it's gonna be a lively discussion at the next meeting. Tell Josh to pack his lunch. All right. Policy 6-3 dot 13 is presented for approval. It was originally presented at the, as a first read on March 18th. Doug Wickham, Director of Technology, will be available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve policy 6-3 dot 13 as presented? Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
As I said in the last meeting, our technology and everything changes, and we need to change our policies to reflect that. And I think this is spurred on by AI. And there's a lot of conversation, I believe, we need to have around that. So, I have something under new business for that.
And I will add, I actually agree with one of our speakers tonight on AI. I think we need to be very, very careful with how we go, go down that road.
And again, I've been having my, my concerns with AI ever since it got started years ago. And I think it's a great tool for us to use. But again, I think we need to make sure that our administration and teachers are trained. It might not hurt to have maybe, and I know I'm talking money, maybe, an outside source come in every so often, just to check things. But one thing we do need to make sure, and I just saw this on the news yesterday, is that they have proven what a security breach HI can cause with personal information. And so, you know, these kids get on things and they put all kinds of information in there, and that could be disastrous. So, maybe we could have something in place to ensure some kind of safety net or preventative measure for them not to type in certain, whatever that might be. Mr. Wickham is probably gonna kill me for saying this, but trying to figure out a way if we could, we could put something in place, so some type of secure input could not even, they couldn't even enter it, maybe. I'm talking way over my head, because I don't know anything about that. But I just know how much of a concern it is and how risky it is as far as, you know, your personal stuff getting out there, and I'm, I'm seeing it all over the place. I think it's a great thing again, but there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot to it, so.
Dr. Guitry?
Sure. First, thank you for making those changes to the, the intellectual property. And, and I just wanna echo some of the things that were said here. I was just at a workshop, a human-computer interaction workshop on Friday. And one of the interesting things that I heard was that there's just research that came out that addressed critical thinking, because that was mentioned quite a bit in the presentation. And some of the research showed that the higher the confidence in generative AI, there's a decrease in critical thinking versus self-confidence. The higher the self-confidence, the more critical thinking there is. So, there's some really good research that's being conducted now that helps us to understand, understand the affordances of AI, but also some of the, I don't wanna just say negative, but, you know, I just think, I would like, when we have presentations about AI, to have balance and make sure that we're, when we're teaching the digital literacy, that we make sure that we're, we're covering all the bases. So, I look forward to future conversations about this. And it's, and I'm not anti-AI. I just wanna make sure that that's really clear. I know it is part of our future, but we also have to, to help our students understand its strengths and its weaknesses.
Thanks. Ms. Purcell?
I do have a question. So, one word that I noticed was kind of repeated several times throughout the document was that, um, the idea of ethical use. So, what is, what's that definition for, for, for MCPS, for staff? And their use of it, for students, kind of what's the, what tool are they using to determine what, what is ethical and what's not?
So, the ethical would be, in my mind, would be bound around our, our policies or our practices that we have on integrity and our honor codes with that. Honor codes for staff, honor codes for students. I added number nine and number 12 at the, number nine under students, number 12 under staff. Number nine, I think, hits that with, when you, when students, we talk about submitting work that's not their own and suggesting that's their own. We have tools in place that we can get, you know, no red ink, there's other things that we can have that are checkers. AI checkers are not reliable right now. And so, to get one and to, to standardize on one is not really gonna help. So, I think as this world evolves in AI, there'll be better tools that help with the ethical use of AI, and we can implement those.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wickham. I was having a, a conversation with someone who's smarter about these kinds of things than me. And one thing that he was, that was kind of reassuring to me in that discussion was that, and maybe just a, something, something to guide some of the, the implementation of this, that if kids are taught to understand that it cheats really badly, like it does some things just really not very well, that might kind of help engage some of that critical thinking and kind of picking apart the, apart the mistakes and, and the, and the weaknesses, so it really doesn't replace, like, your ability to synthesize information and, and that kind of thing. That's a little more of a statement than a, than a question for you. I did have another question about just, materials for students and kind of knowing whether that is, they might be AI-generated. And I don't mean like the example that the students had in the presentation last time, where, you know, their, their teacher had presented information to them, they fed it into the, to whatever platform they were using, and it generated a quiz, but rather just like a textbook that we may be subscribing to or buying that has AI-generated material in it or other, other platforms. Is there any, and that may kind of fall outside of the parameters of what you do, Mr. Wickham?
Right, I can say that every, almost every resource that we have is including an AI component of it. And we were just talking today with another company, and they're saying, you know, we're adding an AI component to ours. Everybody's going to an AI component, whether it's going to be for simply our, our calling system, a remind, you know, with Parent Square, moving to that, they have AI tools to, materials that teachers are using to generate tests and quizzes and other things like that. Everybody's going to add an AI component.
Right, right. I mean, the specific anecdote that I'm drawing from was a discussion that I had with a parent who just was really not a big fan of IXL, and especially the grammar-driven one, where it's frequently wrong and is clearly kind of trained on older English than we use. So, sometimes the sentence structure, or the, where it asks you to put punctuation and things like that is just not really correct. And I just, when we're subscribing to things and using things and teaching our students with them, and they're actually like not right.
Well, we would hope that the professionalism of the teachers, right? They're, they're trained teachers, should not be relying solely, just like the students should not rely solely, on the tool itself. It is just a tool, and I always recommend that, you know? And we're still in the infancy stages, and I, I'm a tool man. So, you know, I have a drawer full of screwdrivers in, in my tool chest. And I started feeling guilty when I had a power screwdriver. I wouldn't use it, because I'd be like, this is, this is not right. I've been brought up to use a, a hand screwdriver. And then I would get into it, and it's like, why am I working so hard with this, you know? Use the tools that are available. But again, it's, it was in the infancy of, of that. I think we're in the infancy of AI. And so, there's, as Mr. Thomas pointed out, there are mistakes that are in there. And we need our staff to be able to, to teach from what they know and to supplement with this.
Thank you.
Dr. Rountri?
Yeah, there's a lot here. I had some questions for internet and AI and digital safety and digital literacy. When do we start teaching teacher, or, sorry, teaching students of those?
We start at all grade levels, so we expect teachers to, to actually loop that into their regular instruction. And we do have some pullout as well. But it is to be timely as they're going through instruction to bring out these things to students. In particular, if you see that a student has done something wrong, you bring that out to the class and say, this is what we don't do, you know, and this is how you can get caught up in these easy tricks on this, you know? We had the same thing when the internet came out, because you can Ctrl-C, Ctrl-V, right? I could take a whole paragraph of information and present it as my own. Same thing with this. You, you could just put in a couple of words, and it brings out information. It's not really your own. Now, personally, I love it. I don't write a letter of recommendation anymore from scratch. I start it and let it do the work, and then I go back and look. And some of it, as you said, being in the infancy, I look at that and I'm like, that is clearly not my writing. Nobody's gonna believe that's my writing, because it doesn't look like what I've done in the past. But I've also learned that it But I've also learned that it helps me write too, because then I look at that and say, well, why didn't I write that way? You know, because they're using some good language in there too. So it's a balance.
Yeah, to, to that point. Have a hard time. Drawing the lines as to what is inappropriate use of AI and what's appropriate use of AI. So when we were in the nineties and you were writing a paper, you wrote it in Word. It's checked all the spelling for you, you didn't have any spelling errors. If you write a rough draft, you take that rough draft, you stick it in chat GPT, you say, clean up this rough draft. You get it out and then you read through it and edit it and produce a final draft from that second copy that chat GPT produced. I don't know, what is that? Is that, is that ethical use of AI? Is that not ethical use of AI?
I struggle with that myself, being a technology person. Because on one hand, it's looked at as you're cheating. On the other hand, it's, you're resourceful. You're using the resources. I was a technology education teacher and part of our definition was using the tools and resources that are available to you to advance yourself. And not, not leveraging those, sometimes I would question. So again, it is one of those that you would have to go back and forth on, yeah?
And then the, uh, the question of AI-generated textbooks. I think somebody had brought it up to me before, it may have been Ms. Purcell that brought it up. That's a really scary idea that textbooks are being generated with AI. Because textbooks that aren't generated with AI from my day in the late nineties and the early two thousands. They had errors in them with people actually going and writing it down. And I assume that those people that were putting those books together were the same level meticulous as I was. When I'm putting together something that I'm planning to present to people, I want it to be right. When I, when I present something, much like last, last week when I was presenting to the board supervisors. I write it down, I read it, I have dyslexia. I present it poorly because of reading it from a paper. I present much better when I'm not reading from a page due to the, the disability with dyslexia. But. I do it because I want to make sure that what I am presenting is correct, even though the presentation is not how I would want it. And the, the idea that we have books that have large sections that somebody's running, being generated through AI. And then editors maybe checking. I understand teachers are professionals, they've been taught. At some point in time, teachers are taught from books that have AI-generated material that's incorrect. And then they are utilizing the same books that are incorrect. And we actually start getting false information into our educational system. So I would encourage us and all school systems to heavily lean on textbook producers. To have real people at least checking it. And I would prefer that it not be generated via, via AI. That they, they have real people generating the, the textbooks and the information that's in the textbooks and then checking it. Based on. Sources that can be cited with some reliability. That's all my questions for today, but thank you for the, the edits to this.
I'm one with that too, you know, electronic textbooks has been, but when you talk about being in the nineties, you know, I was even before that. So, you know, when I had a textbook, we used the same textbook for 10 years. It had the same error in it for 10 years, right? Because it was a printed textbook, you didn't redo it. Well, the positives, I'd like to be positive, is that when you do an electronic textbook, you can correct those errors so that they don't stay in place for the next decade. Where, till you buy a textbook, so.
Electronics, okay, just the, the, the generated without, uh, without somebody checking all of the factual information in the book. Is the question. Because editors, the people that write books are experts in the field. Editors are not necessarily experts in the field. So when those textbooks are being produced with AI and then you have editors that are not experts in the field. Editing the book with no expert ever looking at the book, that's not a reliable text.
Great.
Ms. Franklin, do I start with you? Oh, let's try it. Yeah, I guess, um, I was just curious, Mr. Wickham. You've already highlighted several things that you've added or changed since the first read.
I think there's just two lines that we added to Dr. Gitchery because he asked about the ethical use and explaining a little bit more. So we, we found a line, we, we looked at several, but we were trying to stay, you know, encompass what he asked. But also stay within the, the framework of the document where we have brevity and not a lot of specifics. So that it can, it can be valid over time.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't anything else in there that.
Yep, just those two lines, number nine on the student, number 12 on the faculty side.
Okay, great. I don't have anything else. Board, anything else?
Okay, so it kind of seems like we went from looking at the adoption of a policy to having more conversation around AI. So I'm just going to bring up what I was going to bring up under new business. So I just came back from a school board conference and there were a lot of workshops on AI. And a lot of different conversations around it. And just listening to the seven of us this evening. I would like to suggest that the board do a workshop, have someone from the outside come in. And talk to us about the do's and don'ts, the possibilities and the negative things that can happen with AI. So that we as a board, when we're making decisions around it are better informed as to how it can affect especially public education. So that would be.
Our guest speaker at convocation this year, Ken Shelton, did a nice job with AI. He's, he did a lot of good work and he even had a session after convocation where some teachers got to come. And he, he dove more into AI with the teachers that were there. So he's a good resource. So we, we did have some of that to start the year. So we were trying to be proactive with Dr. Bregan's choice for our, our convocation speaker.
Well, as board members, I think it would be very helpful for us to spend two or three hours listening to someone.
It's a great suggestion. Board, any more comments? We have a motion and a second on, on the floor. Anything else before we vote? All right. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchery?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Rountry?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Great discussion on that one. All right, next up, Dr. Tony Walker, our Director of Special Education. Will present the Special Education Annual Plan update to the school board. Plan will be brought back on April fifteenth for approval.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members and Dr. Bregan. This evening, I'm presenting the Special Education Annual Plan. The annual plan was presented to the SEAC Committee on March fourth during their committee meeting. And they approved the plan with the addition of two recommendations. First recommendation was for increased professional development for teachers in the area of reading as they felt additional reading. Intervention for struggling readers at the elementary level. And the second was for increased funding for supplemental materials for those struggling readers at the elementary level at that point. So with that said. There are no major changes with the annual plan. This grant is usually made, supports current special education teacher positions, supporting students with disabilities at schools across the division. As well as our two on-campus training programs at Bradford University and Virginia Tech. The twenty-five, twenty-six grant allocation funding amounts have not been released yet. They'll be released around June in preparation for the July fiscal school year. That's when we'll find out for the final allocations that we'll receive based on our December one child count of December first, two thousand twenty-four. Again, the, the grant application includes the twenty-four, twenty-five grant allocation amount. We always base it on the previous school year as that current allocation won't be out until later on this school year. It has two funding streams that serves students two through ages twenty-two, which is six eleven, which is two point four million. Funding stream six nineteen, which is preschool only at fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and twelve. This slide shows a comparison of the previous school year versus the current school year's allocation. We did have an adjustment, the DOE did do an adjustment for all school divisions. And that was based off the funding coming from the federal level to the state level. At the federal level, funds are either increased or decreased. And so when the state gets it, they get what they get and then they look to distribute that amongst other school divisions. And so we did have an increase of sixty-three students based on our December first, twenty-four child count. So we do look for a, an amount that is at or slightly above the twenty-three, twenty-four school division coming this June, going into the July school year. Grant allocation totals of six eleven, again, as I mentioned previously, is lower two point four million. That is mainly covers twenty-two special education teachers, forty full-time special education paraprofessional positions. Both in the school divisions and at Bradford University and at Virginia Tech. Also, we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars for various contracting services. And those services definitely have increased over the past year as well. This slide shows the set aside amount that, that's determined by the state. And they do an allocation and they'll send that to us through the Dropbox. And then we are, we get that and we are to apply that. And we have to set aside a certain amount based on what they determine. And this is mainly for parentally placed students in private schools within the school division. And so currently we have twenty-four K through twelve parentally placed private school students at the K through twelve level. And so based on that, seventy-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents are set aside for the entire year. And that's where any parent or a school personnel at a private school may refer a child that attends their school. If they feel that child may have a disability area that impacts their academic learning. And so what we usually do is we, we will have the nearest elementary school or that's closest to that private school. And they will take the child study meeting. Sixteen thousand dollars and seven hundred and ninety-three is for. These are for current division initiatives that we are, that are ongoing within the school division. Here's that smaller grant that I just mentioned, that six nineteen preschool only grant. And that usually supports two pair professionals. And again, that set aside amount for, we have one preschooler who is at a parentally place. And so for that preschooler, seventeen hundred and ninety-eight dollars are set aside for that individual. And so, but once the set aside money is. If it's not spent by the end of the school year, that rolls over into other areas that we can allocate. Nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. Again, that's for materials for preschool curriculum and supplies. And with that said, you know, that ends the presentation, mainly update on costs and, you know, the numbers of costs and for materials supplies and for, for staff funding. At this point in time, I'll take any questions from the board in reference to the annual plan.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Any questions, board?
Sure. Thank you for the presentation. So for the part B in the pass through six eleven, how do? So that, just for a little clarity, so I know that there are assurances that there's no threat to our funding. How, how is that funding pass, is it passed through the state and, or does it go directly? Can you tell me how the money gets to MCPS once you submit the grant?
Currently, it is moved from federal to state. State allocates that across all school divisions based on their December one. They look at other factors as well within the school division. They look at the current census of the school division. They look at the poverty levels of that census and that census is ages three through twenty-one. And so they look at that and they determine all those factors together and then they determine an allocation amount. But it is based, they start first with the December one as the base amount and it moves, moves from there. So it goes from the federal, state and then the state to school divisions based on those factors. And so that's how that goes.
Okay, and so that's not going to change for this year, the way in which the, 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 the federal government is going to allocate?
Yes, there's no change that we have had, we have, have not heard of any changes in how the funds will be allocated to states. And so I think probably if there are any changes. Mainly what's being discussed is that states will still determine the allocations to school divisions. And so, but again, that has to be ironed out as to if there are any pathways added to any of that. So, but as for right now, we're at status quo with it's how it's being done. There's no, been no changes. That's been coming down, no demands or, you know, anything that we've heard of so far.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Any other comments, board? Great.
Okay, so when it comes to staffing. It says twenty-two full-time special ed teacher positions and forty pair of professionals?
Yes.
So is that's what they will fund, but is that the number that we have?
No, all that's funded, the forty-four and part-time, it's a little tricky. It, it's not fully, it's not forty full-time people. We have several people mainly at, on the on-campus training programs. We could have four or five people make up one full position because they work around their courses at the university. Some can work two hours, some can work four hours. So it, you know, so that's how that's determined for those positions. But the grant does fund the entire staffing that we have listed. So, but all of it's covered by the grant.
Okay, so the positions that are within our operations budget is, how does that reflect with this?
It reflects as point five half position, you know, point three. So it, you know, the finance does, you know, give that, that allocation. So what I certainly can do is we, we touch base with finance. I can certainly have this plan touch base with, give some more clarification on that from their end of it. But they are, there are positions, they have position numbers. And so they're tracked through by position numbers that's tied to their salaries. And so, but, you know, all of it's determined that way.
Okay, so I think it's, at this point, what, if we get the twenty positions that we were looking for, plus the thirteen. Which would be twenty-three positions that were proposed in the, in our budget to the board of supervisors. So would that be in addition to what's the positions that are in this application?
Yes, yes, and that's in addition to.
So we actually need more than what this application is gonna cover.
Yes, these applications only cover the grant, this grant only covers the positions that are listed within this grant.
Okay.
And so the other positions are in addition to, and so, yes.
Yeah, so like SOQ, SOQ, they say you only need twenty teachers, but we know we need a hundred and fifty. So they only fund twenty, so it's kind of the same situation.
Yes, we're, we're funded by SOQ, Dr. Biner is off to make sure that we're fully funded by SOQ. However, we do have, you know, our, our co-teaching, you know, initiative that goes beyond SOQ. Because that is the best way that student with disabilities can get the content, you know, within the classroom setting as their genet peers get. Also to, either, if they're in resource settings as well. You know, we, they're taking, it takes positions to deliver that in a resource setting while the other staff continue on. With, you know, those students in the general educational, you know, collaborative setting. So the positions are, you know, the increasing positions are definitely needed. In order for us to be creative, thinking out of the box, making sure that, you know, we're doing something different, not as the same as we've done previously. And keeping the students in mind and the overall achievement in mind. Our directive has been to move the needle and so that's what we're trying to do.
Right.
Dr. Walker, how many special ed teachers do we have approximately?
We about have a hundred and twenty-four.
So this grant funds a small portion of that.
Yes, it funds a small portion.
Always not, it has never come close to funding the full need.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make that point in case someone said, why are you asking for all these spec ed positions? When you have a grant that's gonna pay for it. It's like the state, we're gonna pay for this many, but we're not gonna pay for all this. So it has to come from the.
That's right.
Any other questions, board?
Yeah, so I, I think it is just a good point that it, it is not. I wasn't gonna say, I was gonna say it's not a large portion of our spec ed staff, but it is a large portion of our spec ed staff. It's, it's a twenty percent, that's big. So we, it's important for the community to know and the everybody that funds us, we piece. We piecemeal this together because we get funding from the state, we get funding from the county, we get funding from the federal government. We have to apply for additional grants to get one piece of funding such as this. Um, so it's a lot of work on the, the administration to, to make sure that we have all of these pieces of funding that come together to fund our entire s- uh, school district. So thank, thank you for putting the grant together, and, uh, I hopefully will continue getting the funding from the, the state and federal government.
Ms. Purcell?
Uh, thank you so much, Dr. Walker. I had a question that kind of was more from the, from when I was reading the application than from this, this overview.
Sure.
But can you just tell me a little bit about, um, how you go about the child find, especially for, at preschool age in the community? Again, just so that people understand that we're really trying to make sure that the kids who need services can start getting them as soon as possible.
Uh, yes, uh, any parent, um, uh, any private school, uh, you know, um, or any school personnel can refer a student that they feel that may have a disability that impacts their educational learning. And so then that's immediately, we have ten days to act, and that's by federal. We have ten days to act to make sure that we hold that meeting. And so we bring, the information's brought forward, data's brought forward from either the school setting, if it's a school referral. Parent may bring information that they have, um, to the meeting. And so it, then it's the, a committee's established, and it's determined at that meeting uh, based upon the information that's on the table, you know, whether or not that, uh, the committee feels that, that, uh, should that child be evaluated, because, you know, based upon all that information. And so, uh, once the, it's determined that that child's evaluated, then that's when the timeline begins to start, you know, uh, selecting components to, of what selected components we need to look at, whether it be educational, you know, speech and language, vision, uh, whether it be, you know, you know, psychological, um, and, uh, a, uh, social history. And then all that's determined, um, you know, completed over a certain period of time, uh, usually sixty-five day timeline, but doesn't mean it'll take sixty-five, sixty-five days. But then after that, eligibility is determined, and then we look at determining whether, based upon the information, the assessments that's brought back and discussed and reviewed, and any other information the parent may want to bring forward. If they have out, they may have outside diagnoses or outside medical information. They will bring that as, as part of the eligibility information. All of this discussed, discovered, uh, and, um, and reviewed. And then we, um, determine based on state criteria sheets that'll guide us through the process, determine whether or not there is a specific disability, and then determines which category of disability this student may fall under based upon the information. After that, thirty days, an IP is written based upon that specific category and, um, consisting of goals, objectives, services, accommodations, and so forth. And then, um, uh, that's written and with the parents and ma, collaborating with the parent. Uh, then it's shared with the parent, um, you know, ten days prior to the meeting and the IP meeting, and then we hold that meeting, and then we review that, ask the parent if they have any questions, any changes for their input. And, uh, at that point in time, they're part of that team. And then as a team, we determine that that information is, uh, you know, will best serve that student. And then, um, the parent, you know, agrees to that, the parent may sign off, as well as other committee members on, uh, sign off on that document. And then it's implemented the very next day. And so that's the timeline it takes. And, uh, but, um, we do, you know, uh, we accept, um, anything that's brought forward by the parent. Um, we all, we all, we consider, um, other diagnoses, other assessments. And so, but, uh, we consider that as something that, as a parent's bringing forth as their information. Parents fifty percent of the team, and so, uh, the other fifty percent is the school division. And so we partner with parents quite a bit. So we're obligated under child find to, uh, hold activities, to advertise through the newspaper, through radio, through other means, uh, to try to look for, um, students that are en, within our community that may have a disability, that we may get in early to serve them prior to them getting into a preschool or school age.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation tonight, Dr. Walker. I don't have any additional questions myself. Anything else on the board? Okay, great, thank you. Next up, Willie Howard, our Director of Student Support and Intervention, will present the Hate Speech Policy Implementation Plan.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, School Board, Dr. Bragan. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the implementation of our Division Hate Speech Policy, which has, which was approved on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. This policy reflects our division's commitment to fostering safe, inclusive, and respectful learning environments for all students and staff. Our implementation process has been structured into three key phases. Phase one, planning and policy development. The objective, establish a foundation for successful policy implementation. Phase two, awareness and education. The objective, provide ongoing education and training for students, staff, and parents. Phase three, monitoring and sustainability. The objective, ensure effective implementation and response to strategies. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And so I want to highlight a few key components of our Hate Speech Implement, Implementation Plan, including our structured phases of development, the training and education efforts already underway, and the steps we're taking to ensure long-term accountability and impact. Phase one, planning and policy development. In February, we formed the Student Discipline Advisory Committee, bringing together members of Montgomery County Public School Staff, students and community members to address hate speech prevention. A standard warning letter has been created to ensure consistency when addressing violations. Our principals were trained on March fourth, twenty-twenty-five on how to document hate speech incidents in student disciplinary records, ensuring accountability across our schools. And to encourage discussions at home, families have received informational flyers outlining the policy and emphasizing the importance of respectful language. Phase two, awareness and education. On April ninth, twenty-twenty-five, school counselors will receive training on facilitating critical conversations with students and families. This summer, administrators will participate in professional development to reinforce their understanding of the policy and its role. This policy will also be incorporated into the twenty-five, twenty-six student handbooks. The hate speech education will be highlighted, highlighted, excuse me, during opening day assemblies and at our annual convocation for staff. And phase three, monitoring and sustainability. Amid your assessment in February twenty-twenty-six will include student and staff surveys as well as a discipline data review to evaluate the policy defectiveness. In March twenty-twenty-six, schools will, that demonstrate a significant reduction in hate speech incidents will be recognized for their efforts reinforcing behavioral challenges. And I'll go back to the, yes, thank you. And so our key performance indicators are to increase awareness, decrease in reported incidents, high participation in training, and positive feedback. Any questions or input?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Howard. School Board, any questions or comments? Who'd like to start tonight? Ms. Franklin? Wait, Ms. Franklin? Okay. Dr. Ratri?
Sure, uh, so in training, um, is there, is there some focus on teaching or training teachers why it's important to, to act and be vigilant quickly? And also what, uh, what the, what the impact on hate speech is towards an individual? So trying to impart some empathy as to, to what it is? Because not all, not all people have experienced hate speech or, uh, aggressive, aggressive speech towards them. So it, it's sometimes hard for them to, to understand and, uh, and identify it and then act on it themselves.
Yes, sir, I believe, um, as I stated in April, the counselors will be receiving training. Um, I think there'll be a graduate release als, as well as the policy has been, um, provided. I think there'll be a graduate release, um, with the information and the trainings for, um, our staff.
Okay, so counselors will be trained in April?
Yes, sir.
Um, and then they will train teachers or principals or group leads in the, the school system?
They will also work with the students, bringing them up to speed on, um, the hate speech policy.
Okay. Uh... And then, let's see. And then also, I didn't notice in the, in the document, anything that addressed, um, how we will support those students that are affected by hate speech from others?
So, so there, um, is some, um, jargon in the guidelines and the, uh, presentation that we shared and went over with our principals, but that information is not on this, uh, particular document here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mike Lawrence.
Thank you so much, Mr. Howard.
Yes, ma'am.
So just a, a quick question about, about data collection. Um, like how, how are you gonna code the, these violations in the, in the discipline matrix? And how specific will some of that information be? Um, let's say, for example, um, a Jewish student moves into a community where they are the only one in their classroom, and there, you know, there's maybe a, a lot of, um, things directed at that, at that kid? Like how, how might that be recorded in?
In our initial, um, training and review of the guidelines, with the principals, we did inform them asked that RB nine would be the code based on S-bar, um, in our matrix. However, like I said, it'll be a graduate release. I think, um, we, with the policy, the seed that's been planted, but there are gonna be things that we need to do to help cultivate, um, this vision. So, um, I think that'll be an ongoing process as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let others ask.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you, I'm good.
Ma'am.
Ms. Pardon?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Gatri?
Uh, thank you, um, uh, I appreciate the, the update. I know it's gonna take a while to actually develop, um, an implementation planner. At least when I read that, that there are elements of the policy that I didn't see reflected in the plan. So there was the question about data and how it's being tracked. Um, I know that in, there, there's mention of, um, you know, for, for repeated violations of participation in diversity inclusion program. What is that program? Um, and so there are elements like that where, uh, I, I know that you need some time, so I, I'm happy to give you time. I would like when you have fleshed out more of the implementation, um, that we could have then more information for... So one of the things we talked about was like a due process, um, how there would be an appeal. There's just like, there are details that aren't in this, but I understand you need time to develop some of these. Uh, so it would be wonderful to, once you've done more of that work, to come back to the board with the more complete. Because this covers the initial period of implementation, but not like, okay, so we've done the initial rollout, but then how, how do you continue to implement this? And, and for the elements that are gonna take time to develop, and you can't just do that in a few months.
Yes, sir. We are, um, moving forward with the platform from the, um, the Guardian platform is gonna allow us to track some data and kind of know what the process will be in terms of our compliance coordinator, Mrs. Bressler. She's working, um, with that and through that process. We're not there yet, uh, we still need some time with that piece, but that's one of the platforms that will help us be able to retrieve a lot of that data that we need to know, um, what our next steps will be.
Okay, great, I look forward to getting, uh, getting an update.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so the policy was months to get to the point in January that it was, uh, finally passed. And then we're gonna take another, basically, year to fully develop things? I'm not sure that we need a year to be able to help train our students, oh, I hate the word train, but help to inform, um, our teachers and our students about why this is gonna, why this is in place. Um, I think the, uh, having meetings, I don't know what the communication was, that the flyer that went out to parents to have the conversation, if it explained to them how important this is to, um, our school system and making sure all of our students feel welcomed and safe. So when we start, or when, when we start having issues, which according to the information that we get already, we have hundreds of them, right? And nothing is really being addressed in a way that it helps to curb what's happening. Um, we're just sitting in the same spot unless we're having this conversation with our teachers, not just the counselors and the principals, before the school year starts so that they understand and then have conversations with our students at the beginning of the year to help them understand this is how this works. This is why it is, why it is in place, and what the consequences will be. You know, we've, we've got to let people know what's going on and not just wait to see. Um, the matrix, matrix that are gonna be used, um, as Ms. Purcell said, how is this gonna be reported? Because the conversation, when we were talking about all this, the way things are, we, can be reported is a disruption. Um, inappropriate use of language, and it doesn't reflect that it is really hate speech. So how are those things, those things, as far as I'm concerned, need to be in place when we start schooling the fall?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that what's gonna be happening?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make sure, um, question or I need to add, I'm not sure if the board received the presentation that we, um, reviewed with the principals, Dr. Bragan. I think it may be a good idea, if they have not, to, um, be able to see what guidelines that we did cover, the warning letter, um, the steps that were taken, just so that, I'm not sure if that was shared, just so they have that information.
Yeah, we could share that with the school board, that was not shared. The presentation, that was presented to the principals.
Principals doing it, okay.
It's a great idea.
Okay, so again, a big concern for me is our teachers and our students being informed about this and given the tools, especially teachers, um, how to deal with this. Because it can be very uncomfortable. And if for many years, you've just kind of, well, we'll, we'll, we'll just ignore it or explain it away, that that's not what we're doing anymore. And how they adjust to that and why, that's, that is key to this. Go ahead.
I was gonna share, the, uh, Student Discipline Advisory Committee would also be helping with that process and help develop, um, next steps. Uh, but we're somewhat, we're delayed with some of the days, uh, that we were out during February. So that's somewhat... So that's somewhat, um, is in the timeline, but we had not really got that going the way I would like to see it going, to get that input from community members, um, staff and those that are even students that are part of that, that committee, just, just a heads up.
Okay. So with the, uh, school committees and students that were involved, my thing just went away here. Um, and it said, leadership in the building, my screen just went away. Um, how were students selected to be a part of the committee?
So with the Student Advisory Committee, I, I wanna say late November, December, there was a, um, uh, Google form shared out with principals through the update to share with their school communities, uh, for those, um, staff members, students, community, um, members that would like to participate. Um, and, and hearing some of the conversation of, early on with me being here on, I guess, the makeup of those committees. Uh, I did have quite a few staff members that were also parents. Uh, I had, uh, maybe two or three students that signed up to wanna participate, but we also had, um, maybe, um, more participation, say from Christiansburg wanting to participate as opposed to then maybe, um, the Charlottesville area. And so just balancing those numbers and making sure that, um, that team was equitable, if I can say, and, and based up on the makeup that, those percentages that I think are required to have an advisory committee.
Okay, so.
Not sure if I answered your question.
Well, no, I think I may have misunderstood. I thought it was a school, school-based committees, but it's a overall district.
Yes, ma'am.
Advisory committee. Okay? Cause one of the things that years ago we realized was that the usual students, student council, students you may not have many issues with are always great to have on there, but sometimes reaching out to the students where there are, could be other issues and other points of view.
Yes, ma'am.
Can really impact how we think about how we do things.
Understood. I agree.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Then the only thing I'll add, this is probably just beating a dead horse at this point, but you know, the thing that jumped out to me in looking at the timeline was, was also the, the lack of clearly defined teacher training in here. So I think you've covered that, you know, in terms of some of the other steps, but you know, as we were doing the policy discussions, you know, there are a lot of, those specifics in there that we went round and round and on, and we kinda chose to defer a lot of that out of the policy and make sure it was incorporated in the training, right? In terms of the specific language and, you know, you know, our teachers are kinda the, the point of the spear when it comes to dealing with these situations in their classrooms and the hallways in the school, so.
At all.
You know, just wanna make sure that that, that training is being covered and, um, kinda setting them up, you know, to implement this policy that we're, uh, all in support of here, so. Okay. Any other comments, board?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, with the policy being adopted in January and without a full understanding from everyone in our school community and probably community too, has there been any kind of action taken with students, um, related to hate speech?
I'm not hundred and fifty percent sure. I don't wanna say no. I don't wanna say after the training, um, that we provided with principals, I don't wanna say there wasn't any schools that went back and, um, spearheaded any information or, um, steps to begin to implement that, that policy within their schools. I don't have any data that shows who's done what, where we are with that piece, but I can work on it.
Okay, so, um, again, that goes back to how things are reported, if it's reported as hate speech and there's defined as what is hate speech, when they put that in to the system, then we have a better idea of what's actually happening related to the policy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments, board? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Yes, sir.
And while you're there, uh, student code of conduct revisions are provided for our first read. Um, Willie Howard, our Director of Student Support and Intervention, is available for questions. This revised code of conduct will be brought back on April fifteenth for approval.
Sure, I'm presenting the Montgomery County Public Schools Code of Conduct for its first read. Um, I want to acknowledge that the code of conduct was slightly delayed due to the important work involved in finalizing the division's hate speech policy. Um, the code of conduct now includes a reference to this policy to ensure alignment with our division's values and expectations. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, um, just wanted to acknowledge that the code of conduct was slightly delayed due to the important work involved in finalizing, uh, the division's hate speech policy. The code of conduct now includes a reference to this policy to ensure alignment with our, uh, division's values and expectations. Um, I appreciate any questions or input that you may have for me.
Ms. Bond?
Uh, I actually have one, as I was reading through, um, on the school staff responsibilities. I was just reading and I may be reading it incorrectly, but where it says, um, be engaged in and responsible for establishing a positive school climate. Number two, to be responsible for ensuring a safe, supportive, effective learning environment. I, I think that's a little unfair to our teachers to expect them to be responsible for all, I mean, I, I, is there another way to say, um, to, uh, what word am I looking for? Do, do, am I making any sense there and am I reading it wrong?
What pages up?
Maybe the fifth page.
Not sure exactly. School, it's like it's where it's school, I don't see a page number.
You're right.
Page, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, five of thirteen. Where it's like school psychologist responsibilities.
School staff responsibilities.
And school staff responsibilities. I, I guess, I, I think it would be hard for anybody to ensure safety at all times. I don't know that we can, I think we can strive to do that, but I don't think we can, um, guarantee that no one is going to. But now, I mean, if the board doesn't agree with me, I'm just, that's just something, I just think that's putting a responsibility on someone that nobody can maintain that. So maybe if we put something in front of it to be, uh, to be, yeah, or to be. Does anybody got any suggestion? I mean, do you see what I'm saying? Where it's like we're, it's, it, it's kinda like you saying, hey, it's my responsibility that the board meetings are gonna be safe. Well, you can't, you can't ensure that at all times. That doesn't mean you're not gonna strive to have these board meetings as safe as possible and we're gonna take every measure we can, but to hold that responsibility, and that's what it's saying here. So.
Thanks for that. Go around, change the order up. Ms. Purcell? Oh, boy.
Um, just one maybe editorial thing, Mr. Howard. I noticed that, um, the PBIS is referred to in, um, in this document, but I don't know that it's defined anywhere. I think it may just be an acronym, so just so, so people know, um, you know, what that, what that's referring to. Um, I did have a question just about how this document, how it, how it lives and what the, what the expectations are from it. Um, I know, like, students and parents have to sign something, right? That kind of acknowledges that they looked at it.
There's a, um, process where.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry. What page is that? Four of thirteen, okay. Maybe, um, four of thirteen, it did spell out, uh, PIBs. I'm sorry, Mr. Howard. I think wherever I was looking at it, I didn't see the first.
No need to apologize.
Reference.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, all right, to go back, students and parents kind of sign an acknowledgement of?
At the start of the year, or I'm thinking during their enrolling period, if it's not at the start of the year, that this should be covered as an expectation. Am I correct on that, Dr. Bragan?
Yes.
And this is, um, this is like a static document? It's just provided as a, as a PDF? It isn't something where, um, you know, other information is hyperlinked or I can specifically kind of skip to what is relevant for me as a parent as opposed to, you know, staff members and other people who are acknowledged in, in here? I guess what I was thinking about was information organization and kind of what, what you want the readers to get from this. Um, I know Ms. Bond has said before, and I agree with her, frequently you start school, you're kind of inundated with so much paperwork, you're just trying to get it turned in on time so you don't get a little nasty grammar, so your kid doesn't get in trouble. Uh, and maybe you don't read it as, as thoroughly, so, um, sorry? Or at all. Or at all. So just kind of like where, where the information is located or prioritized and what, like, what you really want the takeaways to be, does that, would that perhaps, um, would you want to move things around? Cause I know some of it is just, um, verbiage you have to have, or it's, you know, historically been in one place or another, and I know that, like, the little section about monitoring for disparities of outcomes and opportunities was moved around, but I do wonder if you think about what, what outcome do I want from most of the people who are reading this and do I put, do I reorganize what maybe should go first or make some information very easy to access because there's a, a little table of contents or cer- certain things hyperlink so that, um, it's just a little easier to find? That's mine.
More seamless for the community.
Right. Thank you.
Be nice to have like a little video or PowerPoint or something, there's just kinda the highlights that everybody can digest and whether you read it or not, you can kinda get the gist of it, right? But if I'm, if I'm understanding.
Oh, sorry. Does ammunition kind of fall within the weapons policy?
I think we have it. Maybe under a destructive device is defined as an explosive. Um, that paragraph there.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
I, I was just wondering, or if, should it be iterated that if you, that those are, those are also considered problematic to bring to school, just based on some discipline issues that we've had?
Dr. Gutrie?
Yeah, iterating that shells are in that weapon policy is a, is good. I mean, it, it should be because it's explosive. Uh, gunpowder's explosive, of course, but calling it out directly so that kids go out deer hunting, throw a round in their backpack, they gotta get that out. Make sure y'all get that out, kids. Uh, yeah, so, thanks for, uh, thanks for the edits and, uh, I think it looks good. Uh, I'm reading over the, that part that Ms. Bond called out. I'm not seeing, uh, good wording to, let's see, trying to go back to it. Oh, pa- page numbers also.
It'd be helpful.
Page numbers on all documents and all presentations moving forward, please.
Yeah.
Huh?
It's five of thirteen. Other school staff responsibilities?
Only when you scroll, uh, the PDF, but not at the top or right or left. It's on, anyway. Uh, yeah, I mean, we want our teachers to be responsible for ensuring a safe, supportive, effective learning environment. Uh, now, is it always achievable all the time? I don't think so, but I, I don't know that the statement's saying that it has to, that it, that it is going to be achievable, but they are responsible for ensuring it. All right. We can argue semantics.
Yeah. Ms. Franklin?
Okay, so that refers to other staff, um, not the teachers, because the teachers' responsibility are on page three, I think, of fourteen. Right? So with that, the number one under teachers' responsibilities to teach and model, um, in the classroom behavior for students. So I think that should also be modeling expectations for their peers too, so that everyone is learning from each other, not just the students. You know, classroom management skills and how we, um, handle situations like hate speech. And then I have a question about school searches. So, I mean, I'm not against them, okay? But with marijuana being legalized recreational in the state of Virginia and, and I'm driving a vehicle that a adult, legal age adult, may have had marijuana in the vehicle and then the car gets hit because there may not be anything in it, but enough for the canine to hit on it, how's that gonna affect our student? I mean, it's legal recreational.
It's a hypothetical, would have to work out that situation, but I do believe, even though it's permitted regulation, it's not permitted for students on school grounds or for anyone under eighteen. So even though it wasn't theirs, it's like if somebody brought a weapon into school or a knife that wasn't theirs, but they brought it in and it was in their car, they're responsible.
Right.
As it is now, right?
Right. And I'm saying, if it's in there, it's in there. We, we've dealt with situations where the grownups had whatever and then the kid has the car and they get hit. But if there is nothing there, but enough for the canine to hit on the vehicle,
Oh, here it is.
How do we deal with that?
I'd review that with law enforcement, honestly, Ms. Franklin, cause I don't have that answer right now.
Yeah.
Check out what their process and procedure would be.
Just something thrown out there for thought, because it will probably happen.
Dr. Gutrie?
Thank you very much. Uh, just a couple of really quick questions. I, I just looked at the, the revisions, not the whole document, the, um, there were just a couple of things around cell phones. There's some, like, just typos in here that I would clean up. There's like a missing space and seven, part of it's not highlighted, small details. But what I wanted to actually ask you, it's on page, there's not a page number, but the page was search and seizure, seizure. Um, when there's some extra language. When there's some extra language added to long-term suspension, it's the top of the page, number fifteen, recommendations of long-term suspension, eleven to forty-five days unless certain circumstances apply. Um, I think we need to list what those circumstances are, because it's too vague. Um, and, and as you know, the Code of Virginia is very specific about what, um, would warrant long-term suspension. Because, you know, it could be applied broader than, than necessary. The, the two other really quick questions, one about the search, search and seizure. I can't say that. Um, there's some added language there. Can you explain, uh, where that came from and the necessity of that? Or just, because I know that there was, there was a community member who expressed concern, but can you just tell us why that language was added? Was there, because I know that there have been searches with canines before, can you?
So, um, I believe the board, you all met either over the summer or before the school year, and you had already determined what was, what corrections were going to be made here. And based on the delay with the adding of the hate speech policy. So I'm thinking you already had already possibly put this wording here and already worked on.
Mr. Howard, now, this, the, the school board, this didn't come before them before. We knew we had to revise it to update some of the language, but the school board has not seen this before. This was an outcrop of our meetings we have with local law enforcement. If we wanted to have that option, that we should put it in the code of conduct. If we don't want to, we don't have to put that in there. You know, the idea was that they do have canine units, and, um, if we wanted to use them to possibly check parking lots in school facilities, we could do that. So that was the impetus to put it in there. Um, it is new language, though.
Okay. I'm not a hundred percent opposed to it. I just want to know where that was coming from. Because have, have canine searches not been conducted before this?
Had them done before. The town has done those before. I've been in a parking lot when they've done one. So it's not new.
Uh-huh. So this is just codifying a practice that's been...
That's where it came from, I believe, from the law enforcement meetings that we had, that, you know, we've done it, and we will do it if you need it and you ask us to, that we should put it in the code of conduct. And I believe Mr. Garrettson was at the forefront of that.
Okay. Um, I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but I just wanted a little bit of an explanation. And then why we're, just out of curiosity, why were, was that list removed, um, below it? Just, just for information, for law enforcement, maybe contacted in the event, but not limited to... Is this just unnecessary language, or is there a reason for removing it?
I'm, I'm thinking it was because it was redundant.
Okay.
Maybe unnecessary, yes.
That's fine. Uh, the only thing I would do is recommend is that the view, the, the legal justification or the backing or support for the, there are different elements of the policy. At the very beginning, where it goes, when you list the Code of Virginia, the different sections, are we just update that? Because there, I think there are a couple of items, there are items that have been added, but they're not attached to any elements of the Code of Virginia. Um, so even with the search, I was looking up, you know, there's a provision in the code for, uh, for student searches, and it's not mentioned there. It's a small detail, but I think it's helpful for community members if they have questions about why, um, there are certain practices that, um, we can link our policy back to code as the basis for our policy. So I would just review some of the, particularly, I think the cellphone policy. Um, you know, I know that that was, um, uh, we, we implemented before. Uh, it was, uh, passed by the General Assembly as, uh, a new statute. So that's an example I would include if it's not been included here. But thank you. I appreciate the work here.
Ms. Farden?
Thank you, Mr. Howard. I appreciate, it's a lot, it's a lot. So thank you for going through that and fine tooth combing it, so to speak. Um, so I had kind of had in my mind what some other people had said, but the one thing that has not been said, and this, this might be fine the way it's worded, is on page eight of thirteen, under the false alarms. Um, it says setting off false alarms or making bomb threats. And the only reason I'm asking about this one specifically is because at Eastern Montgomery High School, not too long ago, we had an issue or some issues with threats being made that have tied up our law enforcement and have come to be not credible. Um, so I don't know if, and it wasn't a bomb threat, but it was, it was a threat to the school and the safety of others that was deemed not credible after spending hours upon hours upon hours of not only the administration's time, but law enforcement time. Um, do we need to be more descriptive under that, um, number? Or do we think with what we have there will work? It doesn't really mention what type of alarm. I don't know if we need to go into that detail, but I, I think we just need to reiterate how important it is to not be doing that.
We, we can look into it.
Okay.
Okay, great. And I'll just add, you know, most of my comments are already, questions have already been, been asked here. I'd definitely say thank you. I mean, as you noted a couple of times, like, there's a bunch of different stuff that's been kind of in flight, in different conversations going back in, I think, last year. Um, so it's, it's great seeing a lot of that stuff in here, the cross, cross-references out to other policies and the cellphone stuff, and the, the distribution piece in here. So I had the same question on the canine search. I didn't know where that came from, but, but that answer makes sense, um, and I'm, I'm supportive of that, too. So, yeah, I don't have anything else. A great job.
Yes, one more question. Um, the mention of alarm did remind me of something, or maybe think of something. Um, I, so we're putting in vape detectors in buildings, and I don't know if it would be helpful to put something in about tampering with those vape detectors, um, because I think that, you know, those are new in our building. And so including something about tampering with those detectors, maybe in that section about alarms, um, could be helpful.
Board, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Howard. All right, where am I? Yep, so next up, um, Dr. Amanda Widener will present the MCPS staffing update.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, school board members, Dr. Bragan. I'm here to present a monthly update on staffing and vacancies across the school division and progress we are making to fill those. Um, first chart is just an overview of our current vacancies by category with a comparison of where we were last month to where we are now. As you can see, there's not much change, and a lot of our focus, as you'll see going forward, is, is our efforts to fill vacancies for next year. Um, so we had, uh, one additional administrator vacancy added recently, and I'll point that out on the next chart. Um, but then most of our instructional positions have remained as, as they've been for the last month or so, and classified, while we've had some changes, where we have filled some positions, we have had resignations in others. So those are our current administrator vacancies. Um, administrator of ELA, uh, the assistant principal position at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, which became vacant as a result of filling the principal position there recently. Um, and then recently, the director of facilities position, which became vacant on March seventeenth. All these positions, we are in the hiring process, meaning we have, um, reviewed applications, we have screened applications, we have, um, set up interviews, and in some cases, we are conducting those interviews. So we have begun the hiring process for all three of those positions. Moving on to our school-certified vacancies. Um, many of these you've seen, because they've been listed before. So for most of these positions, we're, we're at the, a point in the year where, um, we're probably not going to fill them for the remainder of the school year, so we are actively trying to fill these positions, um, for next year. Um, and you'll see, as, as we go down the list, there are some positions that we, um, we have candidates in place or we are filling. Those are our special education vacancies. Again, you've seen many of these before. And again, our focus now is, since we are unlikely to fill these for the remainder of the school year, is to find qualified people to fill them for next year. So you can see, for example, uh, where we have two school psychologist positions open, we have already approved a candidate for one of those positions for next year. In special education, our teacher positions, which has been, you know, one of our hardest areas to fill, um, we, we have filled five positions for next year with another candidate, um, that'll be, um, presented tonight. All right, so now we're going to switch and look at our progress in filling positions that we know we need to fill for next year. So this chart looks at, um, positions that we know are vacant for next year and what we have done so far in filling those positions. So the principal position at CMS, we are in the hiring process. We're also in the hiring process of filling the athletic director position at Eastern Montgomery High School. Accepting applications for a social worker position, um, within our special education department. Um, as I said, right now, um, we're anticipating ten openings for special education teachers for next year. We have filled five of those positions, and we have another candidate recommended, so we're making progress there. We'll have three school psychologist positions open. One position is filled, and we have another candidate in the hiring process. Uh, we are actively looking for, um, qualified applicants to fill three, um, speech-language pathologist positions for next year. We have filled one ESL position out of two-point-five. Um, we have filled one elementary teacher position with another candidate that, that's been recommended. We have six openings there. And then we have three reading specialist positions open for next year, and we have filled two of those. Continuing on, we are, uh, accepting applications for two instructional coaches, the school counselor position at BMS. And I'll just remind you that the school counselor position at BMS was that grant-funded, the serve grant position. Since we did not fill it this year, we've been notified that we, that, that money is available for us to try and fill it for the following year. So we are trying to fill that position. Four English teacher positions, two of which have been filled. A history teaching position we're accepting applications for. We have five math positions, um, two are filled, two candidates are recommended, and we have another candidate in the hiring process. So, um, we're, we're, we're making progress on making sure those positions will be filled. Four science teacher positions, we have filled two of those with another candidate in the hiring process. Two Spanish teacher positions, one of those is already filled with another candidate who's been, uh, in the hiring process. Um, our music teacher band director position, we have a candidate recommended. And then we are looking at applicants for the CTE engineering position at Blacksburg High School. So again, those are all positions that we're looking to fill for next year. All right, switching over to the classified side. So these are current, current positions, um, for this year. Uh, we've made some progress in, in, um, filling some of our open custodial positions. So we have four current, um, openings in the elementary schools, and two candidates are recommended, um, there. And then secondary custodians, where we have nine vacancies, we do have four candidates who are recommended. So we've made some progress filling positions there. We also have a candidate recommended for our open grounds maintenance position. Um, and in facilities, we're still looking to fill HVAC positions, our environmental health and safety manager. And then we currently have three, um, open bus driver positions that we're working to fill. And then on the instructional side of classified positions, um, we have two candidates recommended to fill paraprofessional positions. There's eleven positions still open there, six lunch recess aids positions, one bus aide, um, an occupational therapist assistant, and a floater nurse. So those are all current positions that we are advertising and seeking to fill. And last but not least, just want to give you an update on our substitute fill rate. Um, we added several new substitutes last month, so we're up to almost five hundred active substitutes. And this, I think, has resulted in a higher fill rate in the month of March. The month of March, we had a high fill rate for our teachers, ninety-three percent, which is the best we've seen, and we saw a significant uptick in our fill rate for paras with a fifty-one percent fill rate, which is an improvement over forty-five percent in the previous month. And then you can see the breakdown by communities. So hopefully, our goal is to sustain those rates, uh, for the rest of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Widener. Board, any questions or comments?
Go ahead. Thank you so much. So I just want to ask, um, I'm hearing still about issues with staffing, custodial, uh, custodial staffing at BHS. I know that the company was brought in to clean, uh, so, um, uh, I'm glad to hear that you've hired, there's people in the pipeline. Um, can you address that issue for the community? Because I, I've, I've just heard about it still being an issue at BHS.
In terms of the, the number of vacancies there?
Or, yeah, that there was, particularly at the nighttime, that there aren't that many? Uh, is there any change with the staffing there?
So we, we have, like I said, we have six candidates coming, um, tonight to be approved. Um, so we, I think we've filled some at BHS. We still have vacancies there. Um, and, you know, the, the staff there, um, works to communicate, um, through the leads and the custodial manager. Um, sometimes they will move people around based on need. So they may pull someone from Blacksburg Middle School or an elementary school to help support the needs at those schools. Um, and then, of course, we do have the ability to pull in outside services to do like a deep cleaning on the weekend. I don't have that schedule in front of me, so I can't be specific as to, you know, the last weekend that happened, but I, I know that's, that's a practice we've utilized.
Okay, and is that, so is that happening right now at BHS until you, those positions are filled? And how, and how many vacancies are there still for, for BHS after you, after we hopefully fill?
I, I think that's being assessed on a weekly basis, um, between the custodial manager and her communication with the principal and the needs of the building to determine, you know, if there needs to be a plan on certain weekends for deep cleaning to occur.
Great, so I don't mean to get in the weeds. I just, I've got more questions about it inside. That would be helpful for the community, um, for other members of the community. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Board, anything else?
Yeah, so, thank you for the presentation. Uh, the, the format changed since last time. Uh, I was interested in if there were any updates on the overall percentages of positions vacant in the county for certified and classified personnel. The, uh, the, by the way, the, the chart that you had in our meeting a month ago came in handy in a recent meeting where a number was misquoted, and then it ended up being misquoted in the board of supervisors meeting again. The, the vacancy number for certified positions is around two and a half percent, maybe. Uh, two, two to two and a half percent, and then classified is five-point-six percent, with our, our spec ed being a smaller portion of that certified position that was seven-point-six percent. Now, these are a, a month dated, but having these numbers available quickly for, for those types of arguments is, uh, is very beneficial.
I'll include that next time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um, so with the grounds and maintenance, you said one candidate. So was it just one opening we have there?
That's correct.
Okay. And as far as administrative, so we know, and have known since January, that our Director of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion is retiring, and this is April. Be posting that job before we get to a situation we can't find anybody.
I think that'll be part of the conversation we have in a closed session tonight.
Anything else, Ward? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Widener. All right, Board, are there any items of unfinished business?
I have a, a question. So we have, we, with the board of supervisors and our budget, are we waiting? So I know that they, they agreed on the one cent increase in terms of the advertised. What, what's the update on how we're going to respond to that? I'm just, I'm curious. What's the plan now that they, we know that we have to make some decisions about what we're going to do with our budget?
So we still don't know what we have to do with our budget, because there's a, a hearing, a public hearing on the advertised rate on April tenth.
Right.
Where they get input from the public, so we, we really need that one cent. They ca, they can't go up, but they can go down.
Right.
From their advertised rate. And then on April twenty-first, they actually vote on it. So at, at both of those meetings, for those that support our budget, we need them to, to let the board of supervisors continue to know that they support our budget, and we want, they want the, them to vote for that one cent increase.
Right, so one of my reasons for asking is, um, if we are going to wait to have our conversation about the potential impact and how, you know, because it's going to take us some back and forth, because we're going to have to make some hard decisions. Or would it be beneficial to start those conversations so that it's clear the kind of decisions we're going to have to make based on what the board of supervisors decides? So I understand that there's a process, the process is not complete on the board of supervisors' side, but at what point do we start to have our conversations? Because we know that we cannot get our full budget. Even if they increase by one cent, we've already gotten a number right from the board of supervisors. It's, what's the two-point-nine, right? Um, so that could, that, that...
So that could, that...
The deficit, the deficit is 2.9. And what we're asking and what we're getting provided.
Right, sorry.
0.7 with the one cent tax increase.
I didn't assume that, but yes. And, and, you know, I don't want to speak out of term, but we're assuming that 1%, that one cent increase would all go to the school board. I don't make that decision.
And April 22nd. Okay, I just didn't know if we were waiting until that point to have any conversation because at this point, we know we're already going to have to make some decisions. So that's all I'm asking is just the timing because there was a part of, there's a part of me thinking that if the community was aware of the kind of decisions that we're going to have to make, that it might help motivate some community members who are invested in particular areas of this budget. For instance, we want to do some, well, I don't want to get into specifics, but it may make it more real when, when we start to have those conversations. But if the, if the Board's not going to do until afterward, that's the way things are done, that's fine. I just wanted to ask to get a little clarification.
There, there is also still another area where the community can voice an opinion. The Mountain Valley Pipeline is supposed to pay the county some amount of money for the amount of natural gas that flows through that pipeline. That is estimated that it's going to be like $4 million this year.
Two, 2 million? Are you sure?
I don't know, I don't know the exact amount.
Let's, let's say 2 million since...
I thought 2.5, but yeah, something about...
Yeah. They, they have zeroed that out in the revenue for the county because they're, oh, we can't guarantee that we can get it. None, none of the money that, or a lot of the money that comes to us, we can't absolutely guarantee because some of it comes from the state, they could change things, some of it comes from the feds, they could change things, so forth. Zeroing it out is kind of rough. I mean, they could at least say that 50% of it will be here this year, and then that would be another million dollars available. But those are, those are things that the, the county has available to increase the rate. They're also looking at things like increasing the county inhabitants rate for rental property as well, which could put a few more dollars in the, in the budget.
Okay. Great. I mean, the other thing I'll add is I, the one cent, if it does pass, we're hoping it comes, you know, to us. I just, I want to be careful on the language because if there is a 1%, 1 cent increase and it does pass, one can make the argument that is to cover the increases on the, on the increase on the county side with the Board of Supervisors because they have, they have additional obligations this year. So the way I'm looking at it, if they increase by that one cent, that's not to, just to cover in addition to our budget, but it's actually to address the needs on their side. So I just want to be cautious. I mean, the, that's the way that I'm thinking because when I listened to that conversation with the Board of Supervisors, it was basically to, to help us by increasing 1 cent. I'm thinking, no, that's actually to help cover your additional costs to maintain the ratio that we've had up until this point. So I'm just going to throw that out there. But I, I appreciate the additional information.
If, if the, the school board wants, you know, we have a meeting on the 15th, to put the items that are, you know, part of the increase that we're asking for this year and with a dollar amount to each one, so at least you all can look at them, we could do that. And then you would know what would, if it's 2.9 million or if it's 1.7 that we have to reduce, well, here are the possibilities. And then at least we have that idea. If we want to do that on the 15th meeting, I'd be more than happy to put that together. That's what the school board wants. That's before the Board of Supervisors votes on that increase, correct? Before the hearing?
Yeah.
So I'll just add to that. It's not just items that we've added to the budget, but the whole budget is wide open as to what may be cut.
Okay, Board, any other items of unfinished business? Okay. Any items of new business? Anything? Derek, you mic's on. Sorry, I wasn't sure if those were...
Oh.
Nope, okay, sorry. He's always ready to pounce. Any announcements or information?
I'll just say, thank you to Mrs. Knotts and the Sedexo Group for hosting the Future Chefs competition. That was a lot of fun. Was it last week? Time is kind of a blur. I can't believe how brave those fourth and fifth graders were to make food for strangers in a gigantic kitchen. I don't think I would want to make food for a bunch, for a bunch of strangers. It was all, all really wonderful and, and a lot of fun. So I, I appreciate the effort that went into the event and look forward to more.
I'd just like to give kudos to CHS for the Clue Play. It was great, and the meal that the Culinary Arts provided as well. I have always been an extracurricular advocate, and that's everything, not just sports, but our plays, our music programs, because it truly, all of that enhances education. And I personally believe students need all of that in rounding their education. So thanks, it was great.
Yeah. I'll add to that. I also was able to attend that effort, and it was truly a full-school effort. The food was absolutely delicious. The play was wonderful. I laughed the whole evening. But we had different departments and different classes within the schools, helping with sets, helping with design, even computer-generated tools that were used during the play, building trades, right? I mean, it was, it was just listening to them rattle off who had all supported. The effort was just wonderful. The whole building was engaged in it. And again, I'll say that the food was delicious.
I'll just throw in a shout-out to the Team 401 Robotics team of the Copperheads. They, they won a spot to go to the, the district championship this weekend. They won the Impact Award, which is a very prestigious award across First Robotics, and they're hoping that their performance this weekend will qualify them for, for nationals. So, so fingers crossed to them, good luck. Again, I'm a huge advocate for that program because it, it, it includes students across the whole county, right? It's not just one school. They meet in Christiansburg, but pull students from all throughout our county, and that's, when they represent, they represent MCPS, which is cool. Yes, ma'am? All right, great. Our upcoming school board meetings, they're in Board docs, so we've got a meeting on the 15th. We also have that special budget session scheduled for the 22nd, school board retreat on 25th and 26th, and other meetings as listed. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss two personnel matters?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree in discussion. Osborne, please call a roll.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gettrich?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries.